This is a test. This is a test.
Good evening, everyone, and we'd like to welcome you to our September twenty-third City of Palaca Commission meeting. At this time, I'm going to call the meeting to order. We've got, I'm going to ask Pastor Mulberry if you could lead us in the invocation and the pledge of this time. So if everyone will please stand.
Father, again, we thank you for how good you have been all day long. You brought us together once again, and certainly, God, we say thank you. We pray for your divine guidance and for your wisdom, for your insight, and for all that is necessary to lead this city forward. We pray, God, for the leadership of this dice, that you would continue to bless your people, Lord. Touch us now, lift us up, encourage our hearts, inspire us to do those things that will please you and bring you glory. It is in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Tammy McCaskill.
Here.
Commissioner Will Jones.
President.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
President.
Commissioner Rufus Borum.
Present.
Mayor Hill.
Here.
All present and accounted for, and we have a quorum.
Thank you. As everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from our September second workshop, our commission meeting on September second and our workshop and commission meeting on September ninth.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Motion and second to approve items two A through D. Is there any unreadiness?
Question.
Questions, call all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to public recognition and presentation. First stop is proclamation for Hispanic Latino Heritage Month, September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. This is a new proclamation for us. At this time, we, do we have anyone who's on the Zoom caller with us? I got Ms. Mary Garcia, who's here with us, and also, do I have Trupa Vega? Present with his own Zoom? So he was going to try to make it, so we'll go ahead and present the proclamation. At this time, the proclamation reads as follows.
Whereas Hispanic Latino Heritage Month is an opportunity to celebrate the rich cultural traditions and honor the significant achievements of our Hispanic and Latino-American communities. And whereas Hispanics make up the largest ethnic minority group in the country, the fastest-growing minority community, and make valuable contributions in business, industry, government, education, the sciences, arts, and faith. And whereas brave Hispanics served with distinction in military conflict since the Revolutionary War and continue to defend our country today as members of the armed forces, bringing honor and earning the nation's gratitude for their service and sacrifice. And whereas Hispanic and Latino-Americans have made enormous contributions to our diverse society by sharing their talents, culture, traditions, and their deep connection to family values and a commitment to faith and a desire to live the American dream. And now, therefore, I, Terrell L. Hill, mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby designate September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, to October fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, as Hispano-Latino Heritage Month in the City of Palaca, and encourage all residents to celebrate the heritage and achievements of the Hispanic and Latino-Americans and recognize their contributions to our nation. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Palaca this twenty-third day of September in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-one, non-probbed tongue to September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
So move. Listen on the floor in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Let's give a round of applause.
I think you want to say, Ms. Garcia?
Well, I just have to say, as a, as a Palaca, Latin County Latino girl, my dad's family, I appreciate it, and it's, uh...
Definitely, thank you. And so, today is an opportunity for us, really, to start to expand what we look at. Oftentimes, in America, we see things as black and white. And I think it's a perfect opportunity for us to start to look at all hues, look at all races, all creeds, all ethnicities, as we begin to move forward. Cultural diversity is one of the greatest strengths that we're going to have in this community. The ability to understand, empathize, and grow, I think, in various ways will allow us to all really build. And so, we're just glad that, again, we're, we're on the cutting edge of moving, putting them forward in so many ways. And so, again, thank you for being the first recipient. Thank you. Any comments from the commission? Thank you. Round of applause, please. Next up, breast cancer. We're in this month. We've got a few representatives. I saw Dr. Caravella come in. Doc, will you come forward at this time? Also, do I have any representatives from the hospital with us today? And so, if you would come forward, if you could just all kind of join us right here at the front of the dais.
There.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In the front. You're always front and center with the... So, the proclamation reads as follows.
Thank you. Whereas, the United, in the United States, about one in eight women and one in eight hundred men will develop breast cancer in his or her lifetime, according to the National Cancer Institute. And whereas, when breast cancer is caught early, treatments such as hormone replacement therapy work best, and survival rates increase with recommended mammograms and breast cancer screenings that play an essential role in early detection. And whereas, this month, as we honor those lost to breast cancer, let us join with the loved ones who celebrate their memory and the patients who battle this disease every day, as well as our nation's advocates, medical researchers, and healthcare providers to renew our commitment to better prevent, detect, and treat breast cancer. And whereas, during Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we recognize all those who know the anguish of breast cancer and extend our heartfelt concern for all who share the pain and difficulties of this disease. Now, therefore, I, Terrell L. Hill, mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby endorse, declare, and designate the month of October twenty twenty-one as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And we designate the sixteenth day of October twenty twenty-one as Mammography Day in the City of Palaca, and hereby encourage the citizens of Palaca, private businesses, nonprofit organizations, and all other interested groups to join in activities that will increase awareness and what we can do to prevent and control breast cancer. And in witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Palaca this twenty-third day of September in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-one.
So move.
Second.
This is most on the floor in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Round of applause. At this time, when we present the proclamations, I also ask if you want to give any words. And so, if you can, if you can maybe step to the, if you can step to the podium and do it, that way they can hear you on Zoom as well.
As representatives of the hospital, we want to thank the City Commission for this wonderful proclamation. Thank you very much for recognizing the efforts of everyone in this community who provides diagnosis and detection of breast cancer, and we want that to be early. So encourage all of your family members, your friends, your neighbors, to have mammography early. As the mother of a active breast cancer patient right now, trust me, it's, it's worth it to detect it early. So please be aware of that. Thank you very much for recognizing this. And Dr. Caravella is very much involved in this whole progress of breast cancer and treatment.
So, thank you, City officials and members of the public. Well, I would say that, you know, every week, I see quite a few breast cancer patients. And the best part of the job is, like, today, there were two ladies who were probably treated about five years ago, and it's time to fire them, because they're doing great. And so, when I walk into the room, one, I'm lazy, but I really don't check which side we treated. And, and then, when I'm examining the patient, I try and figure out which side was it. And if I can't tell, that means you've done a good job, right? And then, pretty soon, the patients catch on what I'm doing. This joker doesn't even know which side he treated. But, but the good news is, that's the point, right? That nowadays, we are catching breast cancer so early. Thank you for these kind of efforts, that clearly, it is, it's a good thing. You know, I bumped into Mayor Hill the other day in the hospital. Carl Otte was conducting business, and so, he reminded me. I said, yep, so I'm going to be there. Then he said, you have to say a few words, and I stopped. They're on my tracks. That part I didn't know. So, so, of course, didn't prepare anything. And, but what I will say that I've realized after working in this community for several years, we are seeing more and more patients who are diagnosed early in the game, and that translates to cure. So, one thing that is notable, that thirty, forty years ago, most women, unfortunately, who developed breast cancer, ended up having a mastectomy. Now, in Potnum, I will say, I'd hazard to say that we are over eighty-five to close, I don't want to say ninety percent, but I think over eighty-five percent of women with breast cancer come early, so they don't have to lose their breast, don't have to have a mastectomy. So we really made a lot of positive headway in this disease, so, and thank you for these efforts.
Thank you. To the three of you, there's not enough thank yous in the world for, for the commitment that you have to this community. With blessed hands and blessed hearts, we just appreciate the fact that we have, we have people like you in the room in Putnam County who truly care about our citizens. And so, again, thank you both, all three of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, yeah, we want to continue to thank you guys, and this is a good segue into what is coming up in October. October twenty-third, Avanchia Alfred, she had, she's having a straight-on of Pinktober Walk and Run to help support breast cancers, October twenty-third at eight-thirty. So it would be great to, to have you all there in support, as well as many people in the audience and people in YouTube land. So I just wanted to at least share that.
And so, definitely, definitely, we appreciate everyone who has a program or ceremony that helps raise awareness. And October's our month to, to make sure that we continually push awareness for breast cancer, as well as for domestic violence. And we definitely appreciate those efforts. On a segue also, Mark Dooley, CEO of the hospital, we said, we had a farewell ceremony for him on yesterday. He's served us for three and a half years, but it seems like much longer, because he came into the community, and he poured his heart and soul into Palaca, and so, we're going to miss him. He's created some big shoes to fill in a very short period of time. But again, we want to say to Mark, thank you for just choosing Putnam for the period of time that you were here. And so, let's give him a round of applause. Next up, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, Lee Conley, and also, our own, our own victim advocate, Ms. Shirley Edwards. Wherever you want to stand, I can't tell you what to do. Proclamation reads as follows.
Whereas, domestic violence is a crime that impacts all citizens of Putnam County, and there's an impact that's wide-ranging, taking a dramatic toll on the criminal justice system, law enforcement, the healthcare community, and society as a whole. Each year in Putnam County, an estimated one in four women and one in seven men are victims of domestic violence, which translates to thirteen thousand one hundred individuals affected in our county, based on recent data. And whereas, it is vital for our community to support the victims of domestic violence and assist with their grave financial, physical, and psychological losses, to impose legal sanctions against perpetrators of personal violence, and to help the bachelors unlearn their abusive behavior. And whereas, the Lee Conley House is the only certified domestic violence center in Putnam County, providing a twenty-four-hour hotline, shelter, and other needed services and counseling to victims and their families, and has been awarded certification through Florida's Department of Children and Families. And whereas, the Palaca City Commission endorses and supports all programs sponsored by the Lee Conley House and its mission to provide shelter and support services to victims of domestic violence and their families, thereby assisting in the elimination of domestic violence in our community. Now, therefore, I, Terrell L. Hill, the mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby proclaim that the month of October twenty twenty-one is hereby designated as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Palaca, and urge all citizens to participate in planned socially-distanced activities benefiting the Lee Conley House and its mission to provide shelter and support services to victims of domestic violence and their families, and support its goal of creating a community with zero tolerance of domestic violence. In witness whereof, I have here and to cause my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Palaca this twenty-third day of September in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
The most on the floor in a second. If any, for the discussion.
Question.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Give a round of applause. State us any words.
Thank you to Mike.
It should be still on.
Hi, my name is Keisha Davis. I am the program director at the Lee Conley House. Only certified domestic violence shelter in Putnam County. Today is the honor to stand here alongside my fellow advocates and acknowledging October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Fearing awareness is a big part of advocacy, which is why October is a big month for us. We cannot put an end to domestic violence unless we talk about it, unless we address the issues impacting our community, and unless we work together to place preventative tools and resources in place for our families. Because your family is our family, and it takes a village, or, and it takes a village to keep us all safe and loved, which is why we are so grateful to have the support of the community and our community partners, as we do not do this work alone. We would like to give thanks to our fellow advocates at the Palaca Police Department, and Shirley Edwards, who's here with us today, the Putnam County Sheriff's Office, the Putnam the Putnam County Health Department, and the State's Attorney's Office for always being a phone call away. Advocacy is something that is near and dear to all of our hearts, and we could not do this without you. Also, a heartfelt thank you to the Lee Conley House quarter directors, and the city of Palaca's mayor and commissioners for always supporting us in our, in our mission to put an end to domestic violence as it has no place in our community. We would like to ask you all to join us in our efforts to spread awareness every Friday in the month of October by wearing purple to show our support for survivors everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I just wanted to first of all, say thank you very much for this honor. Every year, it's very important and I do appreciate the acknowledgement of what we're trying to do in victim services at Palaca Police Department. I also wanted to take this opportunity to invite you all on the twenty-third as well. We're going to be acknowledging and honoring survivors of domestic violence. And every year we do the Fall Festival and it's a lot of things to do for kids. But it's also serious to acknowledge survivors of domestic violence. So please come out on the twenty-third of October. And we're also going to have a tailgate contest. Unlike in the past, we've done the barbecue contest. But now we're going to step it up a little higher, have a tailgate challenge is what I'm calling it. And also there's going to be a motorcycle show and a car show. And we'll be down on the riverfront. So you're all invited. And again, I need to definitely urge you to be totally aware of what's going around you, in your neighborhoods, your friendships, and elsewhere. Because we have had increased numbers over the past couple of years. Again, thank you so very much for this honor.
Yes, it's always, it's always a pleasure to see the ladies of Lee Conley House here as well. Kind of the satellite, North Side Satellite Office is kind of inside you. But in, in all, in all honesty, when we look at what's going on with the pandemic and we see the mental health challenges that people are facing, we're seeing an uptick in domestic violence and violent crimes and things of that nature. So we have to be conscious overall within our own communities, within our homes, within our, our daily lives to make sure that we see signs of domestic violence, that we see changes in behavior, and that we are willing to step up and report these things and also be able to provide support to agencies like Lee Conley House so that we don't continually have the uptick in our community. One of the things that we want to do is truly stamp out domestic violence in our community. And this is the opportunity for us in October to paint this community pink and purple. And so again, that's one of the things that we want to do. Any other comments from the commission?
Yes, I did on the comments that the mayor made, but I see here the stats where there is one in eight men are also impacted by domestic violence. So does the Lee Conley House also, is there any place for a man to go if they've been impacted by domestic violence? All right, I'm just asking, just in case if something happened to me.
Can she, can she actually come back up to the mic so that it's caught with the recorder?
Ms. Davis, can you repeat it at the mic so that it can be, so that everyone else will hear it as well? And it, it'll be on the recording?
While Las Vegas does not house men, we're, we only help women and children. However, we do provide services to men throughout outreach, and we would help them relocate and help with any other services that we have.
And I think to add, to show support of Domestic Violence Month, if we take pictures or anyone takes pictures, take pictures, they can share on Facebook, is it? You say hashtag pledge purple Fridays? Okay.
Again, hashtag pledge purple Fridays. So let's look forward to painting Putnam pink and purple throughout the month of October. And thank you very much. Next up, chief, we're here for Fire Prevention Week, October third through ninth. Can I get the gentlemen in the blue uniforms to come forward at this time? And also the gray. Thought I was going to leave you out, huh?
Mayor Commissioners.
You guys.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Commissioner, citizens. We thank you for taking the time to recognize this and proclaim fire safety throughout the city. We would be remiss if we didn't thank our, if we didn't thank our partners with St. Goobain and Certain T, also the Bingo Palace, and all the other smaller donors that give throughout the year to help us fund, to give out coloring books and hats to the children. We'd also like to encourage the daycares and the elementary schools to go ahead and start scheduling. Three eight six three two nine oh one two zero. Ask for the shift commander, let him know what size gathering you need. And we'll bring the stuff out and bring the trucks and let them walk through and see what happens. And we'll talk about fire safety while we're there. We thank you again for taking this time.
The proclamation, we have a proclamation as well.
Whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally. And homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. Home fires kill more than two thousand seven hundred and seventy people in the United States in twenty nineteen, according to the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA. And fire departments in the United States responded to three hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred home fires. And whereas newer homes are built with lightweight materials that burn faster, and many of today's products and furnishings produce toxic smoke when burning, making it impossible to see and breathe. Residents should identify places like the kitchen in their home where fires can start and eliminate any and all hazards. And whereas properly installed and working smoke alarms in every sleeping room and outside sleeping areas cut the risk in half of dying in reported home fires. Residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan that includes a drawn map of each level of the home, showing all doors and windows at least twice each year with family members and visitors, are more prepared and more likely to survive a home fire. And whereas Palaca's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire energy injuries through prevention and protection education. Palaca's residents, including our children, should be taught how to escape on their own and to take personal steps to increase their safety in home fires. Homes in once out should stay out, never going back inside for people's pets or possessions. And whereas the twenty-twenty-one fire prevention theme, Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety, highlights this year's focus on recognizing the different sounds smoke and carbon monoxide alarms can make and what to do when alarm sounds. Now therefore I, Terrell Hill, mayor of the city of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby proclaim the week of October third through the ninth as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city of Palaca. And we urge all citizens to learn the sounds of fire safety for Fire Prevention Week twenty-twenty-one and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Palaca's Fire and Emergency Services. In witness wherein, if you're on two set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the city of Palaca this twenty-third day of September in the year of our Lord 2021.
So move.
A second.
It's most in a second. We're all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Let's give it up for our first responders. Guys, there's not enough ways for us to say thank you to you for your sacrifices, for the work that you do in this community, for the work that you do for our kids in this community. And we just wanted to let you know that we appreciate you. We know oftentimes it's a thankless job, but we definitely appreciate the work that you do, your commitment to this community. And as we commemorate twenty years of nine eleven, we want to make sure that we take time out to make, to just to say thank you to our first responders for all that you do and the sacrifices that you make, putting life above all on a daily basis. So guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Student of the month for September is canceled. We've got a whole bunch of folks on Zoom who are cutting their cameras off right now. But we're going to go ahead and celebrate our students right now. So we're up for student of the month at this time. And so that's where we're moving into, we're getting ready for our student of the month. And so next up, we have, we have Commissioner Campbell, who's going to give us some words before we get started.
To the students, I commend you, we commend you on a job well done. And we ask that you continue to be the leaders and the shining stars that you are, not only this year, but in the years to come. Congratulations and thank you so much for, for showing up in the classroom.
Thank you, Commissioner Campbell, for your words. Next up is our student of the month. Starting out with just a quick disclaimer, I will butcher at least three names every time we do this. So blame it on my head and not my heart. First up from Browning Pierce Elementary School, Odell Willis. Children's Reading Center Charter School, Jaden Bush. Hillcrest Academy, Reagan McNett. James A. Long Elementary School, Chloe Leonard. Kelly Smith Elementary School, Adeline Edwards. Mellon Learning Center, Mahi Rathi, pre-kindergarten.
Get that right, listen.
Look, I'm doing better. Next up, William D. Mosley Elementary School, Leah Canty. Palaca Junior Senior High School, Charles Bryce Bernard. Penile Baptist Academy, Keegan Horn. Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences, Melissa Thomas. She looks familiar. Putnam Edge High School, Eric Brown. So that concludes our student of the month for the month of September. We have a bunch of new schools with new, with new names together. So this is an opportunity for our first at the newly named schools. But again, to our students, first of all, we want to say thank you to the parents because it truly takes a village, the parents, the family members who are all assembled on Zoom and watching on YouTube. Thank you for putting forth the work into our children so that they can continually be successful because it truly takes a village to raise a child. And so let's give a round of applause to all the parents. Also watching and assembled around this dais as well are the educators who on a daily, on a daily basis sacrifice themselves. They're often overworking, underpaid, and underthanked. And so again, we just want to thank you for all that you pour into our youth, for the sacrifices that you make, and for your commitment to excellence. And so again, thanks to all the educators. Finally, to our students, we are truly excited about all that you're doing. It's beginning of the school year. It's been a crazy two years and you guys are still doing great things. And we want you to just continually push forward through the pandemic and everything else because you are truly the leaders of the future for our schools and for this community. And so I want to leave you with something that we've been saying for the last forty years in Ms. Green's third grade class. And we started every day out by saying, I am somebody. If my mind can't conceive it and my heart can't believe it, I know I can achieve it because I am somebody. You guys are somebody special. You're destined for greatness. We're proud of you and we love you at the city of Palaca. And so again, we just want to thank you and salute you for a wonderful job. Let's give it up for our students. Commissioner McCaskill, as we talk about student of the month, we've got, your school has a very different setup this year. And we're going to include, we're going to include two names for the two schools. Can you, can you just talk about your position at the school quickly? And, and what, and, and the breakdown of the school? So we'll have two names for the school coming up in our next student of the month.
And actually is, and thank you mayor for that and this opportunity. I am currently the assistant principal at Mellon Learning Center. And Mellon Learning Center is a combination school. It has K-12 students with severe disability or special needs. And it has the pre-K learning center for all the pre-K centers in the central location. So with that being said, we always try to identify because it's two separate entities at one center. And we're asking that we identify both entities during student of the month, the pre-K side as well as the K-12 side.
Look, so we're always glad, the more kids we can celebrate, the better. And so again, thank you for your work at the Mellon Learning Center as well as your commitment to our youth. And so we will have, we will have two categories for Mellon coming up. Next up, public comments. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. No acts will be taken on topics of discussion. Anyone here for public comment? Please fill out a yellow speaker's card in the back of the room. You can speak during general public comment, or you can also speak based on an item on the agenda that you wish to have, and you just have to mark it on there. As you come to the podium, please give your name and address so that we'll have it for the record. And now we'll open the floor for public comment. If there's anyone here for public comment, you can come forward at this time, fill out your card. Also, you can put general comments in the YouTube chat and we will just see them there. And if it's anything that we can respond to, we'll be fine. And if it's not there, then just give us a call at a later date. You can also use three eight six three two nine zero one hundred extension zero for your comments. So those are your two primary functions, three eight six three two nine zero one hundred extension zero. Or you can come forward to the podium at this time. Is there anyone here for public comment? Seeing no one, public comment, we'll move on to the consent agenda. For this, for this meeting, we have four items on the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you wish to have removed at this time?
Motion to accept items A through D.
There's a motion to approve the consent agenda as written. Is there any unread, is there any unreadiness at this time? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. I just want to make sure that I recognize Mr. Andy Harts. If you could just come forward at this time. And just for the public, Mr. Harts was item B on the agenda. We approved the extension of the golf course lease and, well, the golf course franchise agreement. And I, I wanted you to talk a little bit about some of the major accomplishments that have gone on at the golf course over the last few years and, and what your vision is as we move forward.
Well, good evening. It's Andy Harts, one forty-five, Brittany Lane, Palm Coast, Florida, three two one three seven. The last five years, we've made a lot of gains. We've done really well with junior golf, attracted a lot of tournaments. We're pretty much the junior golf kings in Florida. We do more junior golf tournaments. We're going to start growing some of those. The Azaleas have gotten big. We've had record crowds through the COVID and all the other stuff. We haven't slowed down a bit. So it's been good. Last five years, we've redone a couple of greens. We're in the process of redoing the clubhouse, the outside, tearing out all the rotten wood, fix the roof, painting it, painted the cart barn. So little projects here and there. The next eight years, we hope to get the greens redone. And twenty twenty-five will be the hundred year anniversary of the golf course. And our goal is to get all the greens redone, have a big hundred year anniversary celebration. So got plans on doing that, air conditioning work, general maintenance around the clubhouse. But just keep moving forward, but things are good and it's busy.
There's a nice ranking that you had for the golf course.
Yeah, out of all the municipal courses in the country, I think we were twenty-nine last year out of over five hundred of them. Thank you, thank you. And we'll do better. We'll keep moving up ranks. We'll get there.
And so it's, and, and so I, I just wanted you to come forward to give some information. It, not many years ago, we were, we were bleeding, we were bleeding money at a golf course, for lack of any other term. We are very proud of your leadership. We're glad to have you as a part of this community and a partner with the city of Palaca. Because it's truly becoming more fruitful every year. And it's, it's an opportunity, you, you really engage children from all different walks of life, teaching them the game of golf and partner with recreation and PAL and, and various organizations throughout this community. And we just appreciate the work that you do and we're glad to have you on board for another eight years.
Well, thank you. Glad to be here.
Anyway.
Thank you.
Yeah, permission.
I mean, again, I did all the same comments as the mayor.
I mean, again, I did all the same comments as the mayor, but again, coming in twenty fifteen. The golf course, we were sinking a lot of money into it and I know I wasn't a big fan of it at that time. And so we were, we were basically funding the entire thing and we were losing money. So we had to come up with some. Strategy in terms of, we came up with the PPP and worked with Don Holmes and a number of other people. And we made the numbers work and we're a lot in a lot better place now. So I just thank him for that partnership and look forward to continuing to work with him.
Good, thank you, Andy. Next up, item number six, adopt resolution twenty twenty-one, R one two six, salary schedule, pay classification. And staff salary study recommendation.
A resolution of the city of Palaca, Florida, adopting the city salary, salary schedule, pay classification and evaluation committee salary study. Survey recommendation and providing for scrivener's errors.
Smoosh on the floor in a second. We'll now open the floor before we open the floor for public hearing. We'll go ahead and have the presentation. Got Mr. Masters with us again.
Sir, I'm on the line.
Welcome, welcome again, sir.
Thank you very much, mayor and commissioners for your time in this process. It's been several week journey to get here, so thank you for your questions. And again, for your time and getting us to this kind of final state. As a result of the budget workshops and the initial. Presentation, I'm here to present to you the final recommendation for your consideration. And just to recap what. Rather than move back through the methodology. Reward Advisory Group completed a market survey of your peers as part of this process. We administered a questionnaire to the employees to understand the jobs that they perform. And we constructed with that data a pay plan. That puts the city in a position that's competitive with the market, addresses compression and addresses the city's objectives in terms of. Thirteen dollars an hour, et cetera. So I thought I'd jump to slide seven if we could, please.
Turn them up a little bit, please.
What was that?
Just wanted to turn it up. Couldn't hear you, so had them turn the mic up. You're good, you can proceed.
Thank you, mayor. So on slide seven, this slide again should look somewhat familiar. But as part of this process, you remember that we discussed a variety of best practice implementation options. Throughout our workshops. And today we're presenting for your consideration again, a recommendation that is supported by. City's leadership team and addresses many of the goals and objectives of the city. And if you remember back early on, two of the recommendations that we presented included an option two. Which was a model based around class date parity. In which we addressed compression as well as a model five in which we addressed. Cities' concerns and objectives in terms of pay for those employees below thirteen dollars an hour. And so on slide seven now, what you'll see is an option titled staff recommendation. Which is essentially a hybrid of those two options. And that's the option in read there. In this option, the criteria that we included, included bringing all city employees to a minimum of thirteen dollars an hour. Ensuring a minimum of a two percent increase. And also again, bringing in that model two option where we address things like compression. And class date parity in terms of the number of years an employee has spent in their role. Of course, part of that option initially and still remains in the staff recommendation, a cap of ten percent. On this slide also, you'll see the cost we've calculated out. So we've modeled this employee by employee totals, three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. That's an annualized number that includes. Benefits burden as well. So I'll pause there for a moment if you, if you wish and take any questions. And then I was just gonna jump to slide. Sixteen, which included our four additional recommendations.
Any questions from the commission? Seeing that, we'll go ahead and move to sixteen.
Okay, excellent. All right, on slide sixteen, these recommendations were also presented previously. I just wanted to re-highlight them in terms of four recommendations that came out of the study. Recommendation number one being to implement an annual merit-based compensation program. Where salaries, salary increases each year are at least partially based on employee performance. One point of clarity that I'll make from the last time around. Is that the intent here was an effective date for twenty twenty-two, meaning. The measurement period would be January first, twenty twenty-two to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. For the merit period versus doing it this year on top of the study recommendations we just discussed on slide seven. Recommendation two was to adjust the compensation structure annually based on national cost of living indexes. So as part of our recommendation on slide seven, we also have proposed a pay schedule. And pay grade slotting for the positions within the city in the appendix. And what we mean with recommendation two is that each year, just to keep that pay scale up. To market and competitive with market as well as address things like minimum wage increases that we're seeing in the state of Florida and federally. That the city should be looking at that pay structure and adjusting somewhere in the neighborhood of one to three percent. On an annual basis is typically where those cost of living adjustments land. Recommendation three, we proposed, I believe it was eighteen job title changes as part of this. Just so that those job titles reflect the roles and responsibilities of the position. Those are also included in the appendix. And then finally, recommendation four was to revise the policy manual. To align with state and federal requirements as well as best practice that we see in terms of HR policies, et cetera.
Any questions based, go ahead.
I'm sorry, mayor, I was just gonna add that I'd be happy to answer any particular questions about the study or the methodology.
Any questions from the commissioner at this point?
Commissioner Jones here. I have a question, sir. On the recommendation. Number three, adopt the job title changes. To better reflect the roles and responsibilities. Along with that, I was looking in the packet and I wanted to kind of have a visual of some of the job titles change. And I know you saying about the roles, but it didn't include anything about education level, training or anything of that nature. And I know times past, we've had some circumstances where a person may have been in a department. And maybe the only person left in that department and have been promoted. Because of that fact, not that they had the competencies or. Training or experience or the education level. When you did this survey, was that included or any of those factors included at all or just the specific? Job titles and responsibility?
Yeah, in terms of going to the market and collecting kind of an apples-to-apples comparison on pay. We do use all the available information to us, so it's not a title-to-title comparison. It's also a job description-to-job description comparison. As well as if we have information from that questionnaire that we administered, we take that to consideration as well. So just to answer your question, we, we do look in terms of job to job at the details of the job when we make that. Comparison.
As detailed as this report is and the recommendations, I fail to see that included. Nor have I seen the questionnaire, just a point that I wanted to make. And I had an issue with us realigning job titles with roles that. You know, the responsibilities are there and maybe similar, but. Because of the difference in pay, I want to know what, what, what really drove the differences in pay and could that been a factor? That was that question on that one. Second question I have is. And it's packaged it also, well, I'll get to the next part when you get there, I guess. And it's about the, with us Palaca being in the pay ranges of at least ninety-three percent of the market. And the city actual pay is ninety-nine percent of the market. That's one of the better clarification of, it's a little confusing.
Yep, absolutely. And, and just to address your point on the job descriptions. It's very well possible that the job description or the position questionnaire that we receive. Still, even with that information, doesn't accurately reflect the roles and responsibilities of the job as attended. Or the certifications, licenses, et cetera. So if that is the case, then it's possible that a mismatch is made, right, between job duties. At the city and job duties out at your peer organizations. And then in terms of addressing, I think you were referencing. Slide five, is that correct, regarding ninety-three percent of market?
Yes, sir. And just, just so that I could clearly articulate my, my concern and, and. Give an example, an operations manager. With the city of Palaca is different from an operations manager with the. I think I used Walmart last time or some other private entity. And so they, I just think the skill level and the educational level is a little different. Would you infer that or not?
Yeah, I would agree with that example for sure. And what we do and we go to market to make those matches is we look for. And this is industry standard in terms of compensation HR. We look for a seventy percent match or better in terms of the job duties, the roles and responsibilities, the education, experience, licenses, et cetera. Oftentimes, a job's not gonna be identical, right? One job at an organization might have a few extra tasks that. At your organization, they do not. So you might not ever achieve that perfect match, but we're looking for that seventy percent plus threshold. And another way to look at it too, when we go out is. If someone's going out to get a job and gain employment. We're, they're gonna be looking for a role that best fits their competencies. It might not be an exact match. So if you think about it, what are the roles that, you know, an operations manager at the city of Palaca is gonna go out and look at? And in your example, that's correct. It's probably very different. But in the case of other cities, we're likely gonna find a job that's comparable at that level in terms of hierarchy. At that level within the organization, et cetera, that gives us a pretty good match and market indicator.
Anything else, Commissioner Jones?
He was, I think he was gonna. Go back, please, to the last slide. About the ninety-three percent and ninety-nine percent. He was gonna explain that.
So yes, sir. So just the last point on that in terms of the cuts. So what we're referencing there is. Again, if we, if we go back to some of our discussions earlier on. We did two cuts. We looked at an all-peer cut, meaning every single peer that was identified. Whether it be St. Augustine Beach, whether it be city of Jacksonville, et cetera. When we did that comparison, the city of Palaca was eighty-five percent of market in terms of the range comparison. And ninety-two percent of market in terms of employee actual pay at those organizations. So slightly below market, eight to fifteen percent, depending on which data point you're looking at. The bullet highlighted in red that you're referencing was a strictly a revenue population cut. So from that pool of all peers, we eliminated any peer that was not similar to the city of Palaca in terms of. Revenue size as well as population serve size. And when we do that, the city of Palaca is slightly more competitive than comparing it to the all-peer cut. So the ninety-three percent of market simply says when we compare the range for, let's say, an administrative assistant at the city. To the range for an administrative assistant out on the market, city of Palaca is about seven percent behind. And then in terms of actual pay, so when we then take the city of Palaca's actual pay, what we're actually paying employees. And compare it to the average actual pay for the people in that same role. Across your peer organizations, we're at ninety-nine percent of market. And that's expected when you take a revenue slash population cut in terms of getting closer alignment to the market. But one of the dangers there is that you're eliminating some peers that you may have very real. You know, competition with in terms of your, your immediate local market. One of those being city of St. Augustine Beach, for example.
Any other questions?
I got a follow. My final question to you is, as after the staff. Presented to me yesterday was. Going along with the salary and the salary recommendations. However, having issue with the, the grade and the grade assignment and. Restructure of the titles. Could we move forward with the pay structure with our same? With the same pay scale that we have now? Would that, is that possible? Given the, providing the raises, but not going along with the. Check without changing the titles, leaving titles as is without changing the. The pay grade scale. At this time, even because some of this stuff is phases and it says phase, stay, what we're gonna do in phase two. As far as explaining the approach that's more. The phase approach that you talked about earlier. Am I making sense?
Yeah, the, the job title changes themselves, yes, you can move forward without. In terms of reclassing roles, that's simply a re-titling exercise. With the exception of the, the one role that I pointed out. But in terms of the actual implementation. If we move forward with the existing ranges and roles. I mean, I guess the short answer is, is no. The reason being is. This modeling, all of it that we've done is predicated on. Aligning to a pay grade that's competitive with the market and then using that as a reference point, right, to do our modeling. Particularly in like an option two where we're looking at class state parity to place folks within those ranges. Based on their years of experience and tenure. So if we do want to revisit ranges. You know, and just stick with the existing city ranges. I mean, I guess what, what we would need to do is just look at, to your point, and what I mentioned earlier is a phased approach to the pay plan itself as well. So. There's not a hard black and white answer in terms of yes or no, but some of the modeling is predicated on the existing salary structure.
Any further questions, any follow-up, Commissioner?
But he said no, then he said it was not in black and, no, black and white.
Any other questions for the commission after hearing the dialogue? Concerns from Commissioner Jones. So I want to point out one thing in Ms. Ms. Jones. Ms. Shank and Mr. Holmes, we, we talked a little bit about this today as we went back through and we reviewed. As we reviewed the study and, and looked at a couple of different places in there. We, we, we looked, we saw a few places in there where at the end of the day, it, it seems as though. Sure enough, some of the, the day-to-day responsibilities, even some positions and even down to some of those positions that are. That are paid for from one, from more than one department. There was a need to kind of clean up some of those pieces and then bring it back, I think, in a cleaner format to the commission. As we truly delved into, you know, what some of those jobs were doing. I, I think the logical thing for us to do at this point is to approve the recommendations, except for the recommendation on part three. With the job changes, understanding what the grade changes are, I think. What, what the great changes are on that, we talked about. Going through specifically, looking at some of those jobs and what the grades were and pulling it together. But then we saw a few places where there were some, there's some ambiguity on, on how one job differs from another. But I think it's an opportunity for us to truly go back in, to bring back to the commission at a later date. Uh, after additional research, uh. A true job title amendment for all the, for those jobs, those eighteen or so jobs that we're looking. That we were looking to change. How many jobs was it, Ms. Jones or Ms. Shank, that we were, that we were looking to actually do job title changes on? I know we identify, I, I would say. But we identify maybe a couple more that had some questions on it and we can. And what we can do is, is we can adopt this and then bring back in the next month or a few weeks. Uh, I think the complete, uh, the complete breakdown of what the new job descriptions are so that everything kind of. Meshes together because there, there were a couple of places ambiguity, um, that were in there. Uh, there were some job changes that I necessarily wasn't comfortable with moving forward based on the recommendations that were in place. But there are also um, somewhere we saw folks who were. Um, for example, in positions that would be titled differently, whether it was a supervisor or a foreman versus that title language. Where I think it was just a little bit more time needed, um, I think. From the staff level to start to really dig in the weeds as to how it was reported as opposed to how it's written. And I think those are some of the places. And then we saw some places where. You know, status changes were necessary or even some places where jobs had changed status, but hadn't necessarily made it. Um, to, hadn't made it, hadn't made it to the org chart in the same way. And so, um, that was kind of digging, you know, deep into the layers of the weeds to get to where we needed to be. To see those things. And it was a matter of going back in and calling for some specifications, you know, chief, chief shall help us out with some. As related to job transfers and how it happened because some of it historically happened prior to anybody on the commission. Being a part of what was going on or even um, or even administration being a part of what was there. And so there had to be a historical context put in place to see how that stuff took place because we saw some that took place ten years ago. And you know, it, it's only because you've got the institutional knowledge within leadership that you're able to even see it. So. So I, I think that as it relates to number three. We got time to make sure we get it right. But as to where we are, I think people are more concerned with what they're going to get paid at this point. As opposed to what their job description completely is. And so I don't want to delay cutting checks. For the purposes of us just trying to, the, the key and the rest of the key details when the foundations of the job are going to be the same.
So I, I would like to entertain a motion unless somebody else got a comment.
So you, here in the comments, are there, I'll give everybody an opportunity to make sure that uh, we've covered that. If there's anything from staff that you want to follow up on, Mr. Holmes, anybody, if you want to make any statements concerning it and the commission as well.
No, sir. I, I, I mean, you're correct. There, there were about eighteen job titles, I believe, that uh, that uh, were identified as, as being. Um, perhaps in, in need of being tweaked. So we can, and we can accomplish that in short order. Now that we've identified the eighteen, I think we can accomplish the tweaking in short order. Um, so with that having been said, we'll certainly try to implement whatever the directive is from the commission.
Any other comments from the commission? If not, I entertain a motion.
I'll take a motion to accept a re- recommendation for the pay scale. However, uh, the pay scale only, not the uh, job reclassifications at this time. Or the pay grade changes at this time. So you're not, so what I'm saying is not going to change the pay grade or the title at this time. That's what we're saying, we're going to phase in the rest of this stuff.
Except staff recommendation with the exception of.
Yes, yes.
So there's a motion to accept staff's recommendation excluding recommendation three.
You said second?
Of the second on the floor by Commissioner Campbell.
For clarification, some of the salary adjustments are going to depend upon.
The pay ranges.
The classifications and the, you know, and, and, and the job titles unless I'm mistaken. I mean, that, I, all I'm looking for is clarification. If you, if you have somebody who's in a job and the job is the same under the new category. Then I understand exactly what you're saying. If, if we have somebody who is a uh, lead um, at the water plant. And they're a lead under the new schedule also. But we don't want to adopt the entire new classification roster. Then it won't be a problem to adjust the pay of that lead. Uh, but if you've got somebody whose job classification changed. Or their uh, their pay rate or scale changed. Then their raise was going to be dependent upon that change in the pay rate. So if they went to uh, whatever it was, G nine uh, from, and the G nine range is more than what they're making right now. If you don't adopt the G nine, you know, that, that the job pay rate, the, the salary rate. That, that I don't guess they get a, an increase. Am I, am I mistaken about that?
Well, we could always retro that, couldn't we?
Well, but just go, am I mistaken first because I want.
No, no, and that's exactly what Tom elaborated on, that that was his answer. No, you can't move forward without that piece.
It's a dependency.
But when you look at, but, yeah, but no.
But what, what staff is recommending is not proposed title changes for clarification.
It's the classification. I know what it is. So, and that's what I'm saying, is put a halt on that until we look at it, until we could, and I think we should take an active role in it as commission. Uh, because again, just the example that I use, an operations manager pretty much would be second in command on some, in some entities. Uh, some businesses, I guess we, we use the automotive industry. Uh, operation motor uh, manager at GM would pretty much run things. Operations manager here is, is pretty much.
On a third, third and one.
Yeah, well, it's, it's going to vary. It's just a ti- it's a title. And they're not in third in command here. I think we need to clean, like you say, clean it up and it, it needs to come back before us so that we could kind of like. Clarify those things.
So I, I think a lot of what's cleaned up is how the titles are put into place. Is with some of the grades, there has been some adjustments on grades. Um, on a lot of these positions, um, even looking down to like. Where the language changes, whether it's someone who does purely an administrative job as opposed to. Um, as, 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 as opposed to being a coordinator of sorts. And so those things have been adjusted where they're dealing with admin to positions versus something different or to those capacities. I think all those things have kind of put things into a, a better format. But I think the reality of it is the majority of this product is strong. Majority of this product's strong. There are very few places where I think we find ourselves, um. Where we find ourselves in a position where we got to worry about being scaled too high. I think that's the, the key. Is there places, I don't think we're going to be scaled up. Uh, and the places where we thought that we could possibly be scaled up, they've already been scaled down.
Right. To your point, Mayor, there will be nobody. Affected with their raise that's going to go outside of the pay grade, whether they be promoted to it or not. They won't go outside of pay grade. You, there are some. How many? We, we talked the other day and it was one person.
That was one as we went through the list. As we talked about in that meeting, I made it very clear that. If I would have to do my due diligence to go through every single one of those positions.
And that's what I'm requesting, that you do your due diligence and we get that done so that we would actually have accuracy. A lot of these reports, I mentioned it, um, we, we need to catch the accuracy after the fact. And that's why I don't want to move that fast. I want to get the employees the money now. Don't hold that up. And I, I still feel that we could move forward. And it's not going to delay someone from getting a job title and, but that title does carry money with it. So I'd rather give all the employees the money at this point. And then correct anything that's, eh, because we don't have a number right now. We don't have eighteen people that's going to be affected. If you would tell me that, I'll say, well, that's significant. But the other day it was just one person that we identified. Um, and, and I'll give you a prime example of what I'm talking about right now. We have, I won't give that example. But I think I've, I've, I've put it out there, my concerns. And when we, when we hire people at a level, uh. And it come back and, and invite us because that person competency is not. The level of that job. We shouldn't just go ahead and just say, okay, now because you're here already, we're going to deem you this title and this money. Because we, we're not going to be able to undo that. But I wanted to, I don't want to hold up money. But I do want to hold up those titles and responsibilities and the qualifications. I want to do that. And so. From this point forward, that's all I say.
This is, the commission's call to make, so I'm not arguing a point. I just want to make sure I understand. Um, and we probably need to take an example. So for instance. You know, the salaries that we have proposed, remember. You are giving everybody, nobody's going to be making less than thirteen. That component is easy enough to accomplish. You can raise everybody up to thirteen. Without worrying about pay grades or job titles. That's easy. You could give everybody two percent without worrying about job titles or pay grades. That's easy too. But where I'm having a hard time understanding what you're proposing when you say go ahead and give them the money, but not adopt the salary.
Let's use, use the general service directive.
Sir?
Next to the last line, you, use that one as an example.
And that, I'm sorry, I do want to interrupt. That is something that we're not proposing. We weren't proposing the title changes to be in effect. And I'll give you a great example. My own staff, the accounting, the account clerk two. Whereas we're saying finance specialist two. When my staff and approved by me went through their job qualification in the market. They are compared to a finance specialist two. So strictly based on the job that they are doing and the qualifications behind that job, that is the pay range. Where it sits at under our current pay range without my due diligence. Basically, if we give them that increase under what staff has proposed, they may not, they may not be in that range. So that's where I'm saying, and they have to go in hand to hand.
So, and again, I'm try, I'm just trying to get clarification. I'm, I'm not arguing one way or the other. Um, so let's take the, the uh, example you gave, uh, Ms. Shank, you said, what's? I get general administration.
Account clerk two.
Right, let me finish please. General administration account clerk two, that would go to finance specialist two, correct?
Right.
And the new pay grade would be G thirteen, is that correct? And the range for that finance specialist two would be forty-six to a total of seventy-two with a mid-range of fifty-nine.
Right.
All right, now my question is, right now, what is that account clerk to making?
Ms. Jones. She, she'll have to pull it up. I don't have it in front of me.
She's, is she on Zoom? She on Zoom?
Yes, I'm here.
Pulling it up right now? Okay. So can you pull that forth, Ms. Jones?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
Currently, they are at um, thirty, three thirty-one as the minimum to a max of forty-seven oh one three.
All right, so make sure I'm, make sure we're comparing apples to apples. So that's an account clerk two?
Yes, going to count hurt to.
Account clerk two is at a minimum of thirty-three thousand?
Thirty thousand, three thirty-one is the minimum. Thirty-eight, six seventy-two is the mid, forty-seven oh one three is the max.
Okay, so then the minimum of a financial specialist two at G thirteen is forty-six. Right now, that same position is thirty thousand, three hundred on minimum, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so obviously that's a, that's a, that's a sixteen, sixteen thousand dollar difference. However, we stated that under the proposal, they could not receive more than ten percent. So even though that would be more than ten percent from thirty to, to forty-six. That would be, huh? Sir?
Would that be correct?
They can't receive more than ten percent though, correct?
That would be, that'd be a violation of the pay range, wouldn't it?
It would be something that as I understand it, you're phasing up to. So in order for budgetary, now, look, I'm just trying to make sure I understand and we all are on the same page. And then it's, it's obviously a decision for the commission to make as to how you go forward. But my understanding is that the finance specialist two is forty-six. Right now there are thirty thousand, that's a six, so to take them to the minimum would be sixteen thousand dollars. Obviously sixteen thousand compared to thirty is, is more than fifty percent, right? So we had capped any raise at ten percent to avoid, for lack of a better term, sticker shot. Because of the budgetary concerns and us trying to bring something in that was palatable from budgetary standpoint. With the idea that you'd go up to that range of forty-six in phases. So my question simply is, you know, if you don't adopt the, the uh, new categories. I don't, I don't know, you've, you've got a general ad, a general admin account clerk two who's making thirty thousand. As I recall, the range that she gave, it was thirty, thirty thousand to thirty-eight. So the maximum is below the minimum of the new structure.
Right.
Um, and so how much, if someone's making right now, if they're making the base, let's say thirty thousand, three hundred. How much raise do we give them immediately? You said go ahead and give them the money now. How much money do we give them?
No, we weren't, based upon the two percent and the hybrid, okay? So that's what you, so you're telling me right now, based upon the two percent of the hybrid, that, that clerk is going to go from thirty thousand to forty, forty-six?
No, what I told you was it was capped at ten percent.
Right, so that should reflect that. That's not reflecting that. That's reflecting.
That's the range that, that ultimately that will be the schedule that if I'm understanding it correctly, ultimately that would be. That is the salary range for G thirteen. But we're not going to be able to bring them up to the salary range for G thirteen right now. Because as you saw, we're coming in at substantially less than what was the amount that was budgeted for the raises at the last meeting. So that's why, look, this was a compromise and no compromise gives anybody what they want completely. So the deal was. The deal was cap the raises at ten percent, even if, even if based upon market. They should be getting a sixteen thousand dollar range and they're making thirty now, thirty thousand, sixty thousand raise, cap it. So if they're making thirty now, they're capped at a, a ten percent raise, they're only going to thirty-three. But, and that, and that's how you ended up with the money savings that we have. But ultimately in time, the idea would be to get them up to that salary range that you got there. Now, do I understand this correctly? So my, so, so my question simply is, when you say give them the money now, but don't adopt either the pay grade scale. Or the job titles. I don't know how you implement that.
Because the finance director should be able to tell us right now that those numbers are not going to reflect. Exactly what these employees are going to get right now. So that's why I said it's no sense to put this out there and it, it don't correlate with it. You said sometime and you're right, in time and a phase. But I think that we should review what those numbers are going to be and how we're going to get there. And again, don't do it and be, bring it to the commission and say, well, you guys had sat up there and okayed it and approved it. It's going to come back and bite us. That's how I see it. But that's just my opinion, one person up here. And I think I said enough to bring it to the forefront for you to see it with your own eyes. And so make the decision based upon that, because based upon that, that person is making more than our police officer starting out.
I got a question. Well, I mean, that's, that's a good point. Um, but my, my other question would be. That we would have to adopt the model because those are reflected in the model. Those ranges are. The other question is that if we adopt that model. And legally, legally, what would we be um, bound to? Um, for that particular model? That we adopted and have an individual working in that model. What would that look like from a legal standpoint?
Got a question for me, Commissioner? I just want to be clear.
Go ahead.
That's going to be a legal question because if we adopt, if we adopt that and then if the hybrid model put them at no more than ten percent of what they're currently making now to address that situation, then we would have a major issue having, adopting that model and then having a person working in that, it wouldn't even fit within the financial structure because that's its own dependent upon each other. So that's, that's what I'm seeing too.
Go ahead, Mr. Masters.
You, if I could. I'm not aware of, I, yep. Okay, I'm sorry, Counselor, to interrupt. I was just going to mention that I'm not aware of any legal issues related to paying what we call under men. What I've seen in many instances in the same exact situation in terms of phasing to a model is each year you try to work those employees up to the best of your ability as an organization until you're to that target operating range, right, for that role? Because we know that that range is market competitive. But that's, that's my comment, thank you.
Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Masters, thank you, Mayor. As Mr. Masters said, this is a phase and approach, this is a report, these are suggestions. We have not issued any kind of written documentation telling any of the employees that they will be working in this pay range. This is a, a phase, this is a model that we're working towards. And so as long as we stick to that, then we'll be fine.
When we adopt this tonight, we're doc, we're adopting that document. Am I right or wrong?
You're adopting that document, but it's subject to being phased into those amounts and that's the piece that's in there. And so I, I, I agree with most of what you said, but not all of what you said. I, I think that because you have the ability to phase in, this is all done because, and most of it's done in anticipation of the fact that you're going to have to get to a fifteen dollar minimum in a few years. And because you've got to get to a fifteen dollar minimum, this is how it works. I've worked personally on jobs where we've been below the minimum in, on, on where the salary was and the employer is not bound by law to put you above that amount. The recommended range is what the best efforts are going to be to try to get there. If it takes two years, four years, or whatever to get to that point, you go. But you can't break the bank trying to get somebody to, to, to a proposed range just for the purposes of getting there. The reality of it is, everybody that's sitting up on that chart today is working at the range they're on right now. And what we're doing is making best efforts to try to get them somewhere within what's recommended from a salary survey and adopt something that will provide a greater benefit in the future for people. The reality is, we can stay at the same, we can keep our scales where they are, give raises based upon what's been recommended in here, use this as a perspective range where we need to get to, never put, never say this is an actual range, and you still be in compliance. Because that's just what it is. It, all it is, is a roadmap to try to get you to where you want to be. And if we use the roadmap to build us up in the future, it's fine. If we don't make it there and we fall a little short, it's fine. That's where you are, but it doesn't trigger any employment clauses to my understanding. And that's going to put us in a position where we're saying, hey, we can't afford to pay you what the medium range is, what the range is for your position at this time, but we're going to pay you as much as we can and try to keep you with a job.
May I speak, and not as a lawyer, but.
You can't stop, you can't, never speaks as a lawyer.
The only way that I would see that you would have a legal issue would be if you applied a different rule in implementing the structure, i.e. we're applying the same rule to the structure of capping everybody's raise at ten percent. So if you were going into a different pay grade based upon your job title, regardless of whether the minimum of the new title was twenty or fifty, we're capping everything to a ten percent raise. Um, and then, um, as I, as I indicated earlier, if you're, if the minimum of the new title is below ten percent, then, then fine, you're going to get the, the, the minimum of the new title. So you're applying the same rule across the board to all employees. And from my perspective, that's, that's the, that avoids any allegation of inequality in terms of the way you're trying to approach the, the plan. But as I said, there isn't anything that's, if you had all the money in the world, then, then, you know, all of these imaginative approaches wouldn't be necessary, but we all know we don't. And so what we try to do is prepare a model that would take the city forward for the future. And as the mayor said, it would be a roadmap and a goal, but it recognizes the budgetary restraints that you have right now. Uh, instead of just throwing some money out there and at, at some arbitrary rate and, and saying, well, we've, we've done, we've given you some money, but we don't know where we're going to go next year, the year after, the year after. This would at least provide you with some, in, in at least in our opinion, it would provide you with something in the future that you could aspire to in terms of coming up with a, an applicable pay scales. That was our goal, that's what we tried to do.
So what's your timeline to implement it, City Manager? I mean, we have the document, so we, I guess we shoot for October first to try to implement the raise, I would think. But this document is.
Budgeted for the next fiscal year, yes, sir. It, it, in answer to your question, the budget you adopted was actually offered, it provided for more money than is required to implement the pay structure that we have proposed.
The pay structure? What about?
The pay structure including, and the pay structure is based upon the pay grades. That's what I said, our, I, I've not understood how you could do one without the other now. Maybe I'm just not getting it. But I don't understand how you can adopt a pay structure that's based upon new pay grades without adopting the new pay grades. I, I, and the caveat to that is, yes, we understand we won't be able to fully fund some of the pay grade changes, but those are the ones we've capped at ten. I just, I don't understand how if your salary structure and your raises are based upon the pay grades with limitations, I don't know how you adopt a salary structure without recognizing the pay grade structure. But, and that, maybe I'm just not getting it, I just, maybe somebody else is, and so then, so be it.
Yeah, gonna ask these employees that, that say, well, I saw where I should be making X amount of dollars and explain that to them later when they're not getting those X amount of dollars.
I'm happy to explain, just like, just like I explained, right now, we're trying to, we've, we've come up with a solution that caps the raises at ten percent. The, taking the person who's making the thirty thousand to forty-six, I think almost anyone would say that, it may be what the market says you should be getting, but if you've been working for thirty, I, I doubt that many people would expect a fifty percent raise for doing the same job. Even if you're trying to work them to a competitive market rate and range, I think most of them would be happy at a ten percent raise. But again, maybe I'm, I'm speaking for people that I maybe shouldn't be speaking for.
Any further comments, Commissioner Jones?
No, sir, ma'am.
Any further comments from anybody on the commission at this point?
Well, I just, it just, it, I just don't feel comfortable with it. I just, it just bothers me the way, what, the research and the aligning of the things and it's going to reflect on the commission in terms of when you, we adopt this and we're looking at something, we want to clean things up, and then we're still going into it where we are adopting something, we max it out at ten percent. But that particular grade, again, I don't want to be the dead horse, but that's, that's the only thing that's bothering me. And I don't know how many we have in the, in our city like that. And I don't know, I don't know, take a look at it, I mean, well, how much time does it take to kind of go through it to kind of figure out how many people will be impacted in that respect?
You actually have a listing, I don't know if Lauren has it available there. You actually have a listing of the percent raise that each person will be getting. And, you know, that raise, raises from, that range is two, ten percent. I don't know if we have it, we look at it today in some depth, and we've looked at it before in some depth. So there, we do have that, that listing of what the percentage of raise these persons will be getting. And more raises are lower than the ten percent. I think there were, what was the number that was in excess of? Can you get it real quick?
That was in excess of what? The number that was in excess of ten?
Right, the number that was going to be in excess of ten percent. We're having to cap down to, I don't remember the numbers, you're going to get that right now.
I'm, Mayor Hill, I'm being advised that they didn't hear Minister Holmes.
They'll be okay. All right.
Linda Fuller and the people watching on Zoom.
Okay, well, tell them when we come back, they'll repeat this stuff.
We're going to stay in recess for five minutes.
Order. We're going to go to the share screen.
All right. So as we reconvene, there was a question of where we were as it relates to, the, the conversation was as it relates to adoption of the grades versus adoption of the name changes. And, and I, I guess for the purposes of trying to understand, with direction from the commission, it probably for benefit of staff, are we more concerned with grade or we more concerned with name, whether we adopt a name change today as a commission? So, so Commissioner Campbell, you're more concerned with the name changes. Commissioner Jones, you're concerned with grade and name change? Commissioner Borum?
Yes. Grade and name change, but the other question that I had was that if their duties, mainly I think you get, it will require more money if you had additional duties. Now, that would be correct, right? If you were getting additional duties.
As to where, you're saying as to salary degrade increases?
When, yeah, in the current role. As it is compared to the, I'm just trying to get to what would qualify a person if, if, if their job title change. Because generally, when your job title change, you get additional duties. Correct?
But the recommendation for the job title change, and correct me, Mr. Masters, if I'm wrong, it was based upon the information that you received as to what were the duties being performed by the individuals on a daily basis. And based on the information that you received from supervisors and the individuals, you came up with these recommendations for the change in the job titles and classifications, right?
That is correct, yes, Mayor.
So it came from the questionnaire, the information that they receive as it relates to duties and jobs performed by the people as they sit in those positions today. What was it most similar with when you looked at the control groups that were part of, the, the groups that were part of the, the responses?
Well, I, I don't have a problem with that piece, but generally, if we adopt that. if we adopt that and those people move into those particular roles, that, that wouldn't be a problem, but the thing with that is there, I wouldn't have a problem with that, but the only thing is generally when you have a job title change, generally you get is the additional responsibilities, but.
What he's trying to do with the recommendations is make the job title fit what they're already doing.
Correct.
Which is, I think that's where the confusion may be.
Correct.
He's saying.
Changing the description.
There's, so there, my, the only concern I had, my real concern was that, you know, it wasn't necessarily the grade, we kind of going through, everybody going through their fine tooth comb and talking about grades of different positions. There, and I think every commissioner got a chance to meet with staff and talk about what your concerns were, item by item, employee by employee, job description, job name by job name, as it relates to what's in place. I think there were certain job names like, and I'll say, I, I was in, not in agreement of, of, of a job name going from, we created general services and we went to assistant city manager. You know, and so I, I wasn't in favor of that because we left that assistant city manager position open for a reason. And so, the general services position was one where we were truly creating. It was a work in progress in many ways in creating what the true direction of the position was, so that we, we changed some responsibilities from public works to get into that spot. But I also think that when we, when we looked at this thing, the tasks that were being performed on a daily basis were akin in many places to some of the tasks that were done by people with similar job titles in other areas. But so, for example, the, we had already transitioned from naming foreman, the foreman position to calling it a supervisor, for example, and so, those kind of positions changed. We had some people who were doing administrative work who were called coordinators or, or, or something different when admin too may have been the position name that was closest to where they were, which had the duties that they had in place. And, and at the end of the day, you can't expect Mr. Masters coming in here and looking at this thing in, in his view and taking questionnaires to truly understand what everybody does. Quite honestly, as a commission, because we're not doing day-to-day operational work, we're not gonna truly know what some of these folks are doing on a day-to-day basis in the same level that your city manager or their supervisor may know. We can have a, a general idea, we can also have, we got a, we got an idea, we also have a place where we want to see that position go. But we're way in the weeds, we're way down as it relates to some of this stuff, as to where we are. I mean, and I think the last thing is, as it relates to employment law, I would think that the lawyer would know more about employment law than most people. And I, I think that, you know, and also the employment specialist would know a lot more when he's done the studies. This thing is a target for where those salary ranges are targets as to where you want to be in the future as it relates to people with those positions. Nothing in that precludes you from being able to change a, a job description or a title for a job in the future. We are not, you're not completely locked in to having the street superintendent not have his, his job description changed over the course of time or renegotiate his salary. That's something that can happen on a daily basis, whether he's, his duties go up or down, whether he's promoted or demoted, all those things come in play, you just have to have reason as to how you deal with certain things and certain aspects that are there. But I, I think the reality of it is, when we look, when I look at this, I'm satisfied with where we are. We've touched on every employee in the city in some capacity, it may not be what we wanted to do, but it was doing something that's better than nothing. And so, I can guarantee you, no matter how much money you put out there, you won't get a hundred percent satisfaction. I can guarantee if you take money down, you're not gonna get a hundred percent satisfaction. People are not really, most of our employees ain't looking at that grade, they're looking at what's coming on that check. And I think that we've made a considerable effort, because there are very few communities, I think, that are gonna go in and say, hey, we're gonna throw almost four hundred thousand dollars at making sure we try to take care of our folks. And so, that's just the reality. We now have to phase in over the course of these next five years, four and a half years, getting ourselves to the state mandated minimum wage and putting ourselves in a position where we're competitive, because the reality of it still is, you can go to Wendy's on two oh seven and make seventeen dollars an hour. We can't compete with that as a bottom range number right now, because we're a governmental agency which has a limited citizenship. So, but that roadmap will get us to a point where we can say ideally, we want to be at fifteen. The state minimum wage is going up to fifteen dollars, but we're still at thirteen, knowing that we're gonna push it out as time goes on. And we're, and hopefully we're gonna push above that. But that's only gonna happen if we start to set the goals. I mean, quite honestly, the commission can easily say, we're gonna adopt this pay grade schedule. It won't be in full effect until twenty six as a part of what we're doing on this motion, but we're gonna use this if we get there sooner than we, we get there sooner. But we understand that we're looking at it, because the other thing that happens is this. We've already said that we're gonna look at the pay grade schedule on an annual basis and make adjustments based upon cost of living. So, this document gonna change next year. So, why, I mean, why are we caught up on what it looks like today? Because it's gonna change in another year, our position financially in the city's gonna change in another year.
I'm good, I'm good with, I'm good with it, Mayor, they, they, I've, I've heard from our attorney. And again, like you say, it can be a phase in approach, and it's just a title. And I understand that, so just as long as we understand and know that it's a title, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with moving forward with it.
I mean.
And, and with the, you know, with the, 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 the pay ranges, job names by twenty twenty six, so I'm, I guess there was a motion on the, on the floor.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's still a motion on the floor, I, I want to make sure we had the discussion. And it's, it's not to dispel any concern, I think all the concerns are valid. And I think, you know, I definitely think that Commissioner Jones has done his homework and his concerns are valid as it relates to where we are, I don't get it confused at all. I think he has, the concerns are making sure that the city's not exposed to liability and to make sure that we do what we say we're gonna do. And I think that those are valid concerns, no differently than your concerns, Commissioner. I think at the end of the day, the biggest frustration of all of this is, these guys that sit in this room and that work for this community, they're, they're held in limbo right now, saying, what you, what are you gonna do? And I think we've made a commitment to do something this, you know, the, the way we've set it up, nobody really has a problem with whether what we do as far as implementing those raises immediately. The problem is in semantics, I think, more than anything else. And if we just go ahead and find that common ground and then take a little bit of time to deal with those concerns that we get from Commissioner Borum, Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner McCaskill, from myself and Commissioner Jones, then I think everybody will be satisfied as to where we are, and we create a roadmap for the future. It's not, nothing that we do is gonna make everybody a hundred percent happy, but I think it's gonna make them happier than they were two months ago. And so, that's, that's my thought process. There's a motion on the floor, there's no other discussion on the motion?
Mayor, I don't think you gave Commissioner McCaskill the opportunity.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Campbell, um, um, I have clarification, I'm glad that we all do our homework and that's the purpose of bringing, doing our homework and bringing our concerns before the commission so that we can have dialogue and get clarification, so I have no issues with staff recommendation, actually, I'm, I'm, I'm good with staff recommendation, so thank you.
And may I ask for one of the clarification, since I made the second, and there was clarity after the dialogue, how does that work?
So, there's, the motion is to accept the recommendations except for recommendation three. And based on, keep up the recommendation, chart back up.
Was that the one he made, man?
That was.
Adopt the job title changes to better reflect the roles and responsibility of city jobs.
Seventeen. So, we not see it. Here we go, to adopt job title changes to better reflect the roles and responsibilities, so the way the motion is right now, the only thing that we aren't adopting is job title changes, just the titles itself. So, the motion, the motion to accept the recommendation excluding number three.
Excluding number three and the guidelines, the, uh.
He said the range.
Yeah, the salary range, and you just, you just said that we could, that document, we, we still, we still own that document, but again, the implementation of it, that's all my motion, so that's, it don't have to be.
As far as what my second, it was with, with rec, with recommendation to number three. And being at the clarification and discussion, I want to know how do I proceed if I no longer support the recommendation that is on there, do I vote nay?
It goes through, it goes from your vote.
Thank you.
As an emotion, as a place.
Thank you.
So.
So, what was the, clarify that motion?
Right.
Clarify the motion.
Alright, so the motion on the floor right now, there's no, nothing else here, the motion is for, uh, is to accept the recommendations minus three and minus the other, what were the other two pieces you had, Commissioner? And, and the, and also the grades, correct?
Yeah.
So, that was the motion on the floor, so the motion on the floor is to accept everything except for the job title changes and the grades. And so, is there any further unreadiness as it relates to the motion? Questions call, all in favor say aye. Oppose?
Nay.
Nay. Motion, motion fails, is there a new motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation.
Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor in a second, any further discussions? Does that, that recommendation doesn't include changing the general services name, and I, I just think that, right, I think that the, so I, I, I think we shouldn't accept the job changes, that's my opinion as it relates to the motion, everything else I support. Any other comments on this motion?
Well, that, that gonna be the amended, amended motion?
It doesn't have to be amended, we're fine, it's, it's already on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose?
Nay.
Motion passes three to two. Alright. Moving forward, we're going to item number seven in agenda, second public hearing, final millage and budget adoption fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty two budget year, resolution twenty twenty one, R one twenty seven, setting fiscal year millage rate at six point four zero mils. The city of Palaca convenes the final public hearing on the city of Palaca fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty two final millage rates and final budget as required by Florida statutes, chapter one twenty nine and two hundred. If anyone in our audience is here for the purpose of contesting their property value assessments, a petition for adjustment within the value adjustment commission should have been filed by five P M Friday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty one. As stated on your trim notices, sit via first-class mail by the property appraisers, these taxpayer on the property tax roll. This evening, we will take a number of actions relating to the adoption of the final millage rates and the budgets for fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. For those in attendance this evening wishing to address the commission, citizens' comments will be taken following the overview of the final budget. The final director, the finance, the finance director will now present an explanation of the final, of the final and rollback millage rates.
Mayor and commissioners, the purpose of this, the second of two public hearings is to adopt the final millage rates and budget for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty two. It was properly advertised within the Palaca Daily News on Tuesday, September twenty first, twenty twenty one. Rolled back millage rate is defined as the millage rate which exclusive of new construction, additions to structure, deletions and property added due to geographic boundary changes will provide the same ad valorem tax revenue for each taxing authority as was levied during the prior year. The trim process requires that a notice of tax increase be advertised when the current year proposed aggregate millage rate exceeds the calculated aggregate rolled back millage rate, and the city has done this. Mister Mayor and Commissioner, the total city final budget for fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two is presented to you in the total of fifty seven million, two hundred forty seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy three dollars. This is the same tentative budget that was adopted by the commission during the first public hearing held on September ninth, twenty twenty one, within these chambers. I'm happy to answer any questions pertaining to the final millage rate or on the budget before you have this time.
So, move.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. Are there any general questions, whatever I open for for public comment, or is any general questions or comments from the commission relating to the final millage rate or the final budget? Seeing no questions, I now like to invite, I'd invite the citizens to comment on the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty two millage rates and final budget. As a remind, as a reminder, there will be an opportunity for the public to discuss the millage rates and the budget specifically as prospective resolutions are presented later in this proceeding. Please come forward to the podium if you wish to address the commission. We request that each speaker limit his comments three minutes, the hearing will continue until everyone wishes to address the commission on this topic and they've had an opportunity to speak. So, is there anyone here for public comment at this time? You can also use three eight six, three two nine zero one hundred, extension zero. Seeing no one else, we'll close public comment for this section at this time.
Mayor and commissioners, the truth and millage legislation or TRIM requires the name of the taxing authority, the millage rate to be levied, the rollback rate and the percentage change over rollback rate be publicly announced. Accordingly, for the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget, the aggregate proposed operating millage for the city of Palaca is six point four zero 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 mils, which is seventeen point seven four percent greater than the rolled back rate of five point four three five six mils. Additionally, Florida statutes require the commission to adopt final millage rates prior to adopting the related budget. Before you is resolution number twenty twenty one dash R dash one twenty seven, a resolution to adopt the final millage rates for the fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty two, pursuant to the provisions of chapter two hundred Florida statutes, providing for conflicts and separability and providing for an effective date. This resolution includes a general fund millage rate of six point four zero zero zero, which is unchanged from fiscal year twenty one.
So, move.
For a second. We'll now open the floor for discussion, the public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing, the numbers three eight six, three two nine zero one hundred, extension zero. You can also fill out the yellow speaker's card. Seeing, seeing no one here for public comment. Close public comment, is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously.
Mayor and commissioners, subsequent to the commission adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two final millage rates is to adopt the corresponding fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two final budget. Before you is resolution number twenty twenty one dash R dash one twenty eight, a resolution to adopt the final budget for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty two in the amount of fifty seven million, two hundred forty seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy three dollars pursuant to the provisions of chapter two hundred Florida statutes, providing for conflicts and separability and providing for an effective date.
So, move.
So, motion on the floor in a second, now for public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing? Again, you can fill out the yellow speaker's card, or you can go to three eight six, three two nine zero one hundred, extension zero. Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing, is there any, is there any further discussion?
Question?
Questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Oppose, motion carries unanimously.
Mayor and commissioner, staff request permission from the commission authorizing the city manager to execute the ministerial documents. Required to complete the military and budget adoption process required by Florida statute.
So move.
There's motion on the floor in a second, is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one here for public hearing, we'll close public hearing. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. This concludes our public here.
Mayor and commissioners, the city of Palaca has completed the annual budget adoption process for fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. All requirements as mandated by quarter law have been met. Thank you.
This concludes the second and final public hearing to adopt fiscal year twenty twenty two city budget as required by Florida law. Again, thank you, staff, Ms. Shank, uh, Mr. Holmes. And all our various department heads for helping us put together this final budget for this fiscal year. Um, it's been a labor of love, so. And again, thank you to the commission for all your input and helping make this budget a reality. Next up, item B seven B ordinance twenty twenty one dash thirty two, amending appendix A. Of the municipal code, the city of Palaca that pertains to fees and other charges relating to chapter fifty parks and recreation. Chapter fifty four planning, chapter sixty six solid waste, chapter seventy four subdivision, chapter eighty six utilities. Chapter ninety four zoning, chapter ninety five administrative fees, second reading, Ms. Krantz.
Thank you. And ordinance, ordinance number twenty one thirty two, an ordinance of the city of Plank, Florida, amending appendix A fee schedule, the municipal code of the city of Plank. It pertains to fees and other charges relating to chapter fifty parks and recreation, chapter fifty four planning, chapter sixty six solid waste, chapter seventy four subdivisions. Chapter eighty six utilities, chapter ninety four zoning, chapter ninety five administrative fees, providing for severability, providing for next effective date and providing for scrivener's errors.
So move, thank you.
So motion on the floor by Commissioner McCaslin, second by Commissioner Moore. Public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing? You can fill out a yellow speaker's card, or you can dial three eight six, three two nine zero, one hundred, extension zero. Seeing no one, public hearing, is there any further discussion from the commission? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Moving on, item number eight, citywide water line replacements, presentation of water line replacements.
Mayor, that's, uh, Mr. Griffith, uh, hope is on, uh. On Zoom with us.
I'm here, can y'all hear me?
Yes, I'm clear.
Okay. Mayor, commissioners, um, actually, Ms. Krantz, can you put up the two graphics that I emailed you earlier? Thank you, perfect. Uh, can you go to the table first, the expense tracking sheet?
Mayor, commissioners, um, what we're looking at here is the estimated drawdown of the S R F award. As you're aware, we were awarded approximately seven point eight million with approximately one point two million in principal forgiveness. Um, the three projects that are highlighted there are the current projects. The first one, um, is actually contractually committed to T B landmark. Um, they have not started working in this area. Um, case in point, that's what we want to talk about here tonight. The next two projects are specifically related to Saint John's Avenue downtown and Palm to Mosley. We are contractually committed to completing the linear footage within those areas, either because of a grant requirement. Or because of a partnership with the county. The county is getting ready to bid that phase from Palm to Mosley. That's the total estimated cost of one point two million there. And, um, Sonny, if you could flip back to the map real quick. I'm gonna show these three areas for everyone. So the three areas that are outlined in the black dashed lines and the solid black line there. The one on the right with the pink is the downtown potable section. And the one in the green is alternate area. The one in the blue with the dotted black line. Is the Saint John's Avenue Palm to Mosley. Sonny, if you could flip back to the spreadsheet, please. So if you look down at the bottom, if we try and execute all of these projects. We would be two point five to the negative. Obviously, we can't do that. So what staff is proposing is one of two options for you. Uh, we do need to pull the trigger on the award of the downtown potable, which is the next item on the agenda. Uh, the award is for two point nine million, the three point one here reflected is the total project cost, which includes some construction inspection and engineering. Um, but we're proposing to do either a deduct and remove alternate A from T B landmarks contract for the time being. And or move forward with ARPA funding to cover that additional cost. Because we do need to reserve enough funding to replace the water line underneath Saint John's Avenue. Since we have that partnership with the county from Palm to Mosley. Um, you'll notice I included some additional information here. Uh, the annual rate from S R F is very favorable. It's a point three two percent. And we've actually budgeted in excess of what the annual debt service cost is gonna be. We've budgeted four hundred and three thousand and change, uh, every year, uh, since we started this project. The first payment hits this year. Uh, the annual debt service cost, once we realize the principal forgiveness, is only three fifty one. So you do have some available budgeted debt. Um, and we could go back to S R F in the next cycle, which would be next summer. And using the current rate that equates to approximately a two million dollar project. So if we're lucky enough to get a little bit higher principal forgiveness, in theory, you could cover the additional cost for Palaca Heights alternate A. Um, we did wrap in the cost, uh, for potable in the next phase of Saint John's Avenue. Which is from Mosley back to the railroad tracks, and that section is in the Heights alternate A bid. Uh, now that project with the county, uh, is slated, uh, to start in, Ms. Tucker, are you on the line right now? I believe it's July of twenty one, or twenty two.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, and some other information here just, um, for you is our current debt to income ratio. Now, this is, uh, just using total annual revenues and total annual utility debt payments is eighteen percent. Mayor, commissioners, do you have any questions?
I got, I got, I mean, I was just trying to understand, you say Heights alternate A, okay, yeah, I see, I see. I was just looking at the other height, but you got the height alternate, okay, I'm good. I was just trying to reference that, but you said what was highlighted. I'm good.
Okay. Mayor, would you like me to summarize what we're asking for again?
What's, what's the start, estimated start time or date for the Saint John's, uh, project? That we're, the city is responsible for. I've been asked that before.
Are you talking about the potable section, um, for the section between Palm and Mosley, sir?
I'm talking about. Yes.
Okay, yeah, cuz we have three different sections. Uh, so that one is expected to go to bid soon. We're gonna bid at the same time as the county. In what's called a goes with set, so that the contractors bidding on both of those. Um, are aware that there will be some coordination, uh, between the two parties. We don't have final bid dates yet, but, um, I would expect that bid to go out this calendar year. Probably be awarded toward the end of the calendar year and starting in the first of the next calendar year.
And I don't see mo- um, Saint John's to, I mean, Mosley to, uh, is that thirteenth street? Twelfth street, railroad tracks?
Yeah, it's not broken out, um, separately, uh, but if you look at the table there, it's actually part of the Heights alternate A bid. It includes Saint John's Avenue, Mosley to the railroad tracks.
Yeah, includes Moses to the railroad track. Okay, yeah, right there.
Yeah, so. It's under construction. When, when does that start?
It's a little more complicated than that. So if you're talking about the section of Saint John's from Mosley to the railroad tracks. That actual construction or street construction won't start until probably later next year at the earliest. That is a D O T municipal small county outreach program grant, uh, that we partnered with the county to, uh, secure. It was just awarded. But if you flip back to the map, you can kind of see that it is a small fraction of the entire project area. It's that section in green there. And obviously. Pan over a little bit, thank you, Ms. Krantz.
I, I hate to admit this.
Road in that area there.
I hate to admit this in public, but I'm colorblind. So, could you guys, uh, can you show me exactly the Palaca Heights area again? Why you up there?
Sonny, can you hover the cursor, uh, above? There you go, right there.
So is it, ended that on the north side of Reed Street?
Uh, no, sir, that is on the south side of Reed. It's generally bounded by Reed on the north, Mosley on the west. Fifteenth Street on the east, and then it goes all the way back down to Twig. Which is the ravines.
If I'm looking at it right, I don't see anything other than the two thousand ten project that's on the north side of Reed. That's scheduled.
That, uh, if you'll flip back to the table. Yep, I'm glad you brought that up, sir. So those two projects on there, the northeast and northwest. Those comprise the entire north side, and we have submitted grant applications to D E O. And they're pending review.
Now, while we own this, I just wanna make this comment at this time that, uh. When I, when I reviewed it, I see a lot of things that is on that side of town always pending, always seeking the funding, so, um. I would like to see some of those projects start to, we find that funding and start seeing some construction going on. So I wanted to say that, and it mean when I, when I didn't see anything, uh, pending, and I saw just seeking funding. I just wanted to say that.
Mr. Griffin.
Yeah, we, we still have, uh, the ARPA funding.
Right.
That could also be utilized for that, while those funds are being sought, so. Uh, that's just an option that the commission has to be able to vote on that too, so it's not, I don't think it's completely out. I mean, we could make some progress in the area if we so choose, because that's what it could be used for that purpose.
Yeah, so commissioners, just want you to be aware of what will happen. Um, and ARPA is still on the table. So if you approve the award of the downtown potable on the next item. Staff will need to bring back either a resolution approving the, the use of ARPA funds. Or a deduct to remove the necessary amount from the Heights alternate A bid. Now, you could further direct us that you want us to focus on a certain area within the Heights. Say, for instance, you want us to focus on the northern end so that we get Saint John's Avenue done in preparation for the upcoming street reconstruction project. And leave the southern end of that for a later phase when we identify additional ARPA funds or S R F or utility or better place. Any further questions?
Think we should look at E D A as an opportunity for funding as well, um, for some of the Saint John's Avenue. Project, because we can tie that to, we can tie that to, to the economic development.
Um, Ms. Tucker, I know that we've had some conversations with E D A. Do you wanna give an update on that in regards to projects?
Yes, we've had several conversations with Mr. Vidé over at E D A looking for possible, um, grant opportunities. And the issue that, um, Mr. Vidé pointed out is that we need to have new industry coming into the area. In order to score high enough to fund our potable or infrastructure initiatives. Um, and so that's kind of where we are. With E D A.
So, so what about on the, on our, our downtown potables? We've got, you've got a significant number of new businesses that are coming into that area.
He's saying businesses that are going to create fifty to two hundred and fifty jobs.
You've got some of those, some of those places are projecting over a hundred jobs. And so, um, you create the opportunity there, and then as you look at, um. And, and so you can possibly tie some of those into that same, into that same criteria. I think it may be an opportunity for us. To have additional conversations with the individuals who are pushing, um, some of those projects to see. How we can tie them into the job creation aspect, because I, I know for.
That would be wonderful.
Projects that are projecting over a hundred jobs.
Mayor, we're more than committed to, um, actually sit down with those individuals. Uh, they will need to actually commit on the grant application similar to a D E O. Uh, so, um, if we need to have those conversations, uh, we'll make ourselves available.
Did they tie those dollars in the same way D E O did with something similar to the thirty five thousand per?
It's not the same calculation, but they still want the same type of commitment for job creation.
Alright, similar concept, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, any other questions from the commission? Jones? Got your hand on the button?
No, I, I spoken, it well, with that opportunity, with new industry coming in. I could say that, that I noticed on the, on the north side of Reed Street, uh, Beck Automotive Group have, uh, they had an old Pick and Save building. That they quite sure that they're gonna have about fifty more jobs that they're created. And that should, uh, create opportunity to, uh, bring those dollars over there on that north side, uh, with the roads and everything. So, uh, definitely, I want you to look into that, uh, Mr. Griffin.
So can we look at that, so that fifth to fourteenth street project, is that tied into? Um, the north, the northeast project?
Yes, sir, uh, that's, uh, pretty much the entirety of the northeast project. We do have a, a small run of water line. Included in the downtown section that runs up eleventh street, um, over to Madison.
I know in some places we cut off at six when we did the, when the initial approach came from, from North Estor. So can we, um, so are you able to maybe, um, do an update, looking at that? You know, maybe looking at piecemeal in that project, a portion of it, and seeing what other opportunities exist north as well. So that we kind of get back to where we were as far as pushing out, um, kind of the mirror image on the project. Or seeing that there's some other places that we can pick up to kind of tie into the piece. Cause we talked about, cause the last time we talked about fifty fourteen, um, as being kind of a primary, um. As a, as a primary approach to where we were.
Right, yeah, we would probably recommend continuing west, um, staying on the north of Maine, um, up to Dunham. Um, it's about a, you know, four block run, uh, so it could be basically, can, we could break it out into smaller phases, yes. We would just have to identify some additional funding.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Didn't we say we were gonna, uh, utilize the ARPA, ARPA funding for this, uh, project? For Saint John's Avenue downtown district portable? That's what I thought I heard.
He, he suggested it, one of the, he suggested that we, there hasn't been a commitment, that's what he's looking for, um, for us to give direction. As to how we move, how we push forward.
Okay, alright, well, uh, and that would be, that would be for the complete amount, because my understanding, he said that we weren't. We have not been awarded the grant, I mean, the grant yet, or the funding.
Which funding?
The, for the, um, Saint, Saint John's downtown district portable, that's, I think then he requested to maybe pull funding from ARPA.
Right.
Just fund that for two point one or something like that. So. Does it, would it, would it take? The full two point one to do that particular project if we couldn't loop something, something else? And if we're gonna pull from ARPA, that's what, you know, we'll be voting on that. And maybe tie in some of that money to some of the things that we had talked about. And maybe tie in some of that money to some of the things that we had talked about prior to fifty-fourteen. On that northeast, uh, area. I mean, just, um. We're not using, we, we don't have to use all that funding. We could, like you say, we could piece it in. We could still get some of that funding and tie in those projects while this is pending as well. I mean, I'm, it's not a vote tonight.
I agree with you, Sid.
Any other comments from the commission? I, I think the other piece of it is, I mean, when you look at what we're getting interest rate wise from SRF. It. Why wouldn't we, why wouldn't we go ahead? We've already budgeted for the debt service. Why wouldn't we take the additional two million? And use that fund, use that funding, leverage some of the ARPA funds so that we can get more bang for the buck at a time when the interest rate is low. And the ARPA funding should, in my estimation, should be used on projects that we wouldn't typically score well on. In any other category from an infrastructure standpoint, because at the end of the day. If you don't use your ARPA funding from the infrastructure side of the ARPA funding on those type projects that are not gonna score well. Whether it's from EDA or whomever, then you may never get this opportunity again to fund those from anything other than your general fund. And so, um, that's just, that's just my thought. Um, any thoughts from the commission on that?
Uh, I echo that sentiment.
So that's the, that's the big reason. I mean, it's no different than what we did with the stormwater project at Booker Park when the money was there with water management. Because that, that project would have never scored from the same cycle except for what was being proposed at that time. And if you don't start to look at those opportunities, then, you know, that's where, um, I think. You, you, you're gonna miss out on this, you know, while we're doing that, of course, we're gonna do stuff for, to try to, to try to better help our citizens, but we also. We can better help our citizens as well, uh, if we can get them a better quality of life. And so you gotta better look at all of it together because the question's gonna come up and is. Are we doing something that's all encompassing for all of our citizens in the same way? Even when we look at, um, areas like Roland Hills or, or we look, you know, we're, we're looking further in those areas. As it relates to the city past Palaca Heights, we still gotta say, hey, are, we know there's newer infrastructure in those areas in most cases. But are there concerns in those areas in the same way? And so more than anything, Mr. Griffin, what are you seeking as far as?
So Mayor, uh, really wanted everyone to be aware of the moving pieces here. And that with the upcoming. Award of the downtown potable tonight, and then the bidding. An award of the St. John's Avenue Palm to Mosley with the county later this year. We're gonna have to be prepared to make a decision, be it use ARPA funding. Be it go back to SRF and see if they'll increase our award up to nine point eight million on the current terms. Or. Delete scope from alternate A and delay the decision until next year.
So, Mr. Griffin.
We just got that ARPA funding. So if we wouldn't have gotten the ARPA funding, how are we gonna proceed?
So without the ARPA funding, it leaves you those two options. One is to go back to SRF right now. And increase or request to increase the award amount up to what the debt service budget, budgeted would cover. Which would be approximately nine point eight million, which would cover everything but about a hundred thousand dollars. Of what's shown on this sheet right now, or reduce scope from alternate A. And it would be basically cutting everything off the southern end of that and just doing what we need to get accomplished. To complete the project with the county, uh, for the rest of the St. John's Avenue corridor in the next two years.
So again.
And it would be helpful, everyone, to kind of understand what you would like to see. Be it a deduct in the next month to kind of delay the decision, be it a revisiting of the use of ARPA funds. To complete the current phases, uh, because we need to have some clarity as we move forward with the county on that next phase.
That five point two.
So yeah.
So we got five point two. So. Again, and infrastructure is a major, major thing, and we can, you know, look at other things that we can do as it relates to. Some of the other, uh, approved, um, spending, um. That's, that's approved, so.
So, um. I, I, I also think it's necessary for us to give staff the direction to seek the other two million. Um, is there any opposition to that?
No, I agree.
Commissioner Campbell.
Michigan Castle.
I agree.
Mr. Borum.
Yes, sir.
So, um, looks like by consensus, we need a motion, um. Off the presentation, we'll just get a, I'll entertain a motion to, to authorize staff to seek the additional funding from SRF.
So move what Mayor just said.
No, you have to make. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Campbell. There's a second by Commissioner Jones. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Question.
All in favor, say aye. Most curious.
Thank you, Commissioners.
And as it relates to the ability to move forward with ARPA funds, do we? Do we, sounds like the, is there a, a, is there a thought process to move the scope of this project? Do we want them to look at these projects, reduce the scope of any projects?
Well, I would say look at, I would say look at the east, northeast.
Any?
I, I request that we look at areas that I requested, um, and you mentioned, uh, on the other side of Main Street. Those areas, we, this, and, and, and if we have to use ARPA funds for that infrastructure project. Because there's some roads over there in real bad shape and they need attention. And, uh, you know, we keep putting that off. Um, and I know we want a beautiful city, but we can't have a half city looking good, another half looking not so good. So that's a recommendation for me right now. I don't know how to, that's a commission feel.
It's, it sounds like staff is more inclined to look at the northwest. Northwest would be, should, looks like northwest should gain. Um, more pro. Sooner priority than northeast. Would you agree with that, Mr. Griffin? It's probably easier to look northwest before northeast based on. Some of the opportunities that may exist.
Uh, actually, Mayor, I would probably take the approach of building off the existing trunk line on Dunham Street. Which would impact both the northeast and the northwest. Um, I will note that. Uh, we need to probably give this a month or two. We just asked DEO for almost a total of seven million dollars. These two projects and it's, it's likely that they're gonna fund those. Uh, it looks like we're gonna score well.
They fund that, then it'll, that'll fund both projects, right?
Yes, sir.
Almost in entirety.
Uh, no, in entirety.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, so. Hearing the recommendation from staff. We can just direct staff to look at these two projects and then we'll see how we score on the, on the DEO project as well. Does that, that, that give you more clarity?
It does. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else as relates to these projects?
No, um, hoping we can share some good news in the next couple of months.
Yeah, definitely. All right, let's move on to adopt resolution number twenty twenty-one, R one twenty-nine. Award invitation to bid twenty twenty-one dash twelve downtown potable to TB Landmark for a contract. At two million nine hundred ninety-nine thousand four hundred nineteen dollars and seventy-six.
Resolution authorizing award of ITV twenty twenty-one dash twelve and execution of a contract with TB Landmark for St. John's Avenue. Downtown Water Main Improvements Project Providing for Scrivener's Airs.
So move.
Second.
It's a motion on the floor in a second. We're now open for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we're closed public hearings. Any further discussion? All, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on, City Manager Administrator reports, item A is a discussion of utility connections, annexation policies and impact fees.
Mayor, uh. Jones has requested that this topic be put on the informal discussion. See, uh, summary. Notes that the. Well, first of all, the question that raised about whether or not we have a more important impact fee. That is addressed in the first period of the summary. For a form on impact fees. Twenty twenty-one. We had nothing happened after December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. However, the existing impact fee structure was established in two thousand and seven. It is a companion. So in order to have any realistic, uh, assessment of your. Reasonable cost of impact fee, you probably have to have a new impact fee study.
Sorry. Did I mention I love Zoom? Um, if you'll look at the very last pages of section nine A. The, and I mean, that's probably the last three or four pages, you'll see a summary. It's entitled Notice of imposition of impact fee rates. That actually was passed in two thousand and eight, December twenty-two thousand and eight. And it gives the rates that were established and they've not been changed since that date. Um, so you'll see that two pages, three page summary, excuse me. That provides for what the residential, commercial, industrial and residential impact fee rates were. Um. So that has to, that is a status update, so to speak, on impact fees. Um, with regard to annexation, um. We had hoped very much to address the whole annexation issue as part of the strategic planning process. Uh, and as part of that process, we had hoped to, and we have already mentioned it a couple of times. Establish something akin to an urban service boundary in connection with county or cooperation with the county. With an assumption that anything within that boundary would be something that we could reach economically. In an economically feasible fashion with our infrastructure outside that boundary, perhaps not. Um. I say perhaps because there might be an, uh, an annexation request that might have be contiguous to. Existing property within the city and because of its nature, it might have a positive impact, uh, on, on this, on the city. But, um, at, at least right now, our position is, uh, has been that, uh. There's state statute that sets the parameter for when you can annex, the main criteria being it has to be contiguous. To existing land that's in the city. Um, and we have extended water, uh, outside the city limits based upon a out of city rate. Uh, with an annexation agreement that states that if and when the property at issue becomes susceptible to annexation, they would annex it. And, um, so with that, uh. My understanding was the commissioner wanted to discuss pros and cons of annexation. So it's, uh, I'll open it up at that.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, thank you, City Manager, for putting that on the agenda, as you said. Uh. When this moratorium expires, we should be prepared to address it by having those up to date numbers. Knowing what it's gonna look like or what it should look like for if we want to move forward, uh. Imposing impact fees, uh, and I asked on the last meeting to, just for that. That project that we okayed, just to show, uh, the numbers. Of if we would have did the same project. Just water and sewer services, we're just gonna get those versus, uh. The impact of them being annexed in to the city. I wanted to see what those numbers would be. So that was my request. If you recall. As well.
So, uh. So if you, I mean, you're asking.
We asked the.
Cost of installation would be for the water and sewer, what revenue would be produced?
What, yes. What, what would be the impact, financial impact for the city? Cause we were talking about, and I know that, I mean, the mayor talked on it. He had the points, but I had asked specifically, uh, could, you know, we see what those numbers would be like. Uh, with the hundred forty-four units. And I guess we don't have that.
No, I, I don't have the, the revenue from a hundred and forty-four units specifically as to water and sewer only. So. We can, we can provide that information to you. I mean, that annexation request has already been granted. But as part of the continuation of this study, if you want to use that as an example, we'll get those numbers together for you.
Yeah, but it definitely won't, I want you got, want you to move forward. My request is that you be moving forward to have the numbers of. Current rates for impact fees, because we're gonna, and you say in December anyway, we're gonna revisit this.
It expires in December. It's up to you as to whether we revisit it.
Right. So we, we, we need to have that information. So that's why I wanted it on the agenda so that we could, as a commission. You know, you could poll your constituents and, and see how they feel about it. So when it comes up, that we'll have that information. So that's just being proactive and that's why I want.
So I, I think one thing that we, one thing about impact fees that you gotta understand is. The reason the impact fees were told in the first place is because of market, what happened to market. I think that's the first thing. And so. The, the purpose for suspending the impact fees was to try to use that as a catalyst to get people to come in and to build and develop within the community. Uh. The reality of it is that we were pretty stagnant during those periods. Now we're finding a point of activity and it's been a conversation piece, I think, over the last six years. There's a point of activity, whether it's, uh, expansion of gas lines or expansion of water lines, replacement. Um, people are finally coming into city to Palaca because the other areas are saturated and. We're definitely in a position where you start to consider impact fees, but I think as you get to that point. You also gotta understand that. You wanna have something going on when you start having that conversation. So you wanna have building going on. You wanna have the activity. And so the question becomes. Would that, with the, you know, with the impact fees have been a hindrance to. The overall budget of the individuals coming in with a hundred and forty-four units. And, and choosing Palaca versus choosing some other Hawthorne, for example, where the number may have fit better. And so I think that the time is right for us to do the impact study. So I, I think looking at these numbers, the numbers are stale compared to where we were before, and maybe time for us to update our impact study. And I think that we're getting to the point where we truly gotta look at whether we're gonna bring impact fees back or not. I think. We've maybe slightly premature, maybe, you know, within the next year. You'll see, once you start to break ground in larger projects and we're seeing, because we're seeing consistent residential projects going up. But I think once you get the larger commercial activity, then it puts you in the perfect position to start to look at where you are. Uh, and it's all about timing, because the one thing you don't wanna do is make a move that stops growth. And you wanna be able to, you wanna be able to look at your growth and have smart growth, but I think. The beauty of Palaca is because it was designed to be the capital of Florida, because it was designed. As the first community of mass transportation. All your major through fairs exist. So unlike St. Augustine and some of the other places, we're not hamstring, we're not locked in as it relates to. Roads for ingress and egress in the same manner. We've got, I think, a bit more latitude as it relates to how we move, but. We just need to make sure that as we, as we look at, as we look at these. These issues concerning impact fees and development as a whole, I think it's a great question. And I think it's an opportunity for us to be educated on what other communities are doing as you begin to. Put impact fees in place. But the other part is when you start to see master, master plan communities come up in these things. You're looking at what, uh, what other things are coming in to benefit communities as a whole. So you become educated as to all the tools you have in your toolbox, and then you just have to make a decision as to when you start to pull the trigger on. And but I, I truly believe that, you know, we gotta look at our rate structure because it hasn't been looked at in a while. Um, and then once we go from looking at that rate structure, then you start to be advised on, is it? Um, and then once we go from looking at that rate structure, then you start to be advised on, is it the proper time to really pull the trigger on impacts? And is it going to, you know, is it going to stymie growth, or is it going to be something that people just aren't going to care about? You know, at one point, I would say the beauty of Palaca was you could get, you could get land cheap and land was plentiful, but the prices are going up. And we're seeing that over the last three years, over a hundred and fifty percent change in value on properties. And so we just got to make sure that we're competitive. The good part about it is mostly the other places around us are saturated, you know? But the one thing that we want to do is make sure that, you know, we, you know, we, we continue to be a hometown for people, and we continue to be a place at the same time. But our citizens also want to be many of the big cities, so I, I agree, but I think it's time for us to start to at least commission, uh, an updated study as a starting point, and then creating a workshop where we sit and talk about how impacts and development um, can be used as a tool to help uplift the community.
Also a great segue into this, uh, in its own, on here about the, uh, utility connection, right? We want to, we want people to move in, we want to be flexible, as you said before. And that goes to changing the policy of annexation. So where a person could actually still, our policy now says that a person would have to annex in to receive the services, is that correct, uh, City Manager?
No.
We extend water lines outside the city limits, uh, normally on, on hardship scenario. But we do, or, and we have done it for businesses, we don't normally extend sewer lines outside the city limits unless annexation occurs.
Right, so, so, um, I'm proposing that we look into being more flexible, allowing the water and sewer services, you know, if we, we, we're going to get revenue for them, uh, and just change, you know, for resident as well as commercial building.
You get revenue for them if they're in the city too. So the component you lose is you don't get avalon taxes.
So again, again, I mean, I get what you're saying, you're right.
Sometimes you miss the franchise fee.
Huh?
And sometimes you miss franchise fees and some stuff.
Yeah, I mean, just that, at some point, I don't see everybody running, there's a lot of people running to actually be on city services, we have a lot of requests for that, and maybe I'm over speaking, maybe they don't, don't want the services.
We had, over the last couple of years, we've had an influx of people, particularly in that Hudson Avenue corridor, who had fail, they had fail septic systems, whether it was drain fields or septic tanks, who decided to get on city sewer. Um, because there's a large enclave, um, just to the west of Hudson Avenue, where, um, we, at one point, I think we had about ten come in, you know, within a short period of time. And, um, you've got, and so you've got areas, for example, um, i- if you're going out, Palm at, you're going to St. John's and Palm, looking at the area by Palaca Ford, Green Road, all those areas. All the people are, people are asking to get on city sewer and to get those opportunities in there. Um, we just kind of, um, you know, we were sitting there, me and Mr. Holmes and Mr. Griffin were sitting there looking at that whole corridor as a subject of sewer opportunity. When you talk about, um, the area from Palaca High School, that whole Palaca High School area, um, that's to the north, going all the way back to Palaca Ford and that whole area, it's a, it's a, a giant corridor of people, both commercial and residential, who would benefit going, starting from about the credit union back, that would benefit from having sewer in that area. And it would be, I, I think, an economic driver for commercial properties as well. And so we're looking at, you know, opportunities there with water management and, and also from an appropriation standpoint, to look at those places as you start to expand now, um, into Francis, where we've got service area with the, with the fire department, those same things happen. So there are a number of enclaves throughout the city that created, we've even looked at Palm, you know, to, to go to what you're talking about. We've looked at how we could service, say, we could service Civil Lake Drive, you know, the Civil Lake area, and be able to provide services there outside of the city. Because, I mean, I, I think we've all talked about it in our, in, in our joint commission meetings with the, with the county, that forced annexation may not necessarily be the way to go, that's kind of, that was the old school thought process. And we were looking at trying to figure out how to provide additional services. The Gas Authority is probably the best example in this county of how it works. And, you know, just when it relates to water and sewer, we've been, we've been a bit old school in the, in the manner in which we address some of those things. And I think that, um, you know, a, a more progressive train of thought as it relates to forced annexation, and even getting the county on board as it relates to creating the urban service boundaries, creates the opportunity for us to become more efficient. You know, at the end of the day, police and fire find themselves dealing with county calls a lot faster than the county does in areas that shouldn't necessarily be in the county. And so, um, but we're trying to communicate that, and I think when that happens, you, you clear up the registration, you, you, you clear up a whole bunch of confusion. Um, I'm sure, um, Ms. Kitchen, you've had that conversation a million times about what color the garbage can is, or whi- which agencies coming out and how we start to deal with those things. It's, it's a conversation that's been going on for decades, and we're trying to, the biggest part is getting concessions. And the road money is the biggest barrier to the whole thing. And so by being able to get, by being able to have those conversations, I think we get back to the points that you're talking about, so that you can create annexation policies and strategies from a commission standpoint that makes sense for everybody. And it helps you advance, because sometimes annexing the property is not necessarily the best opportunity. But in some cases, depending on the size of the project and what it's going to do from a tax revenue standpoint, it makes more sense. Any, any other comments from the commission, any other things on your list?
Uh, I, I do know, I mean, you made a good point, we, if this is going to expire at the end of, uh, this year, that's something that we certainly need to be, uh, looking at, because when it does expire, those, uh, these fees, they, they go on effect, so that's something that we really need to put on our calendar, I mean, our, our calendar within the next couple, next week or so. We have a short time window to, I guess, just, I don't know how long it takes for them to do the study and along, among other things, but when it expires, those fees will still be in effect. That means that if a, a builder comes in, then they will be subject to these, then we will have to either waive them or whatever. So that's, uh, action that we're going to have to involve.
Just going to get a lot more requests for concessions. Just be a lot more requests for concessions on projects.
Right.
So, um, so do we want to get staff to bring us back some information on cost of impact studies?
Can we hear from the professional, the subject matter expert, uh, Lisa Walsh on that, yeah, before we leave the subject?
Can you hear me? Commissioner Jones, I appreciate your confidence. Impact fee studies typically take anywhere from three to six months, depending on the, you have to go out and get a consultant, send it out to bid, that sort of thing, um, impact fees. Mr. Hill has elucidated very well the possibilities of that could happen if you go ahead and institute them again, as far as its effect on development. It's also necessary, though, to run the city, to have the impact fees to, to create and increase your infrastructure, to provide those services for people, whether it's roads, parks and recreation, fire, police, law enforcement. I'm sorry, it's the same thing. Water sewer, um, does that answer your question?
Schools and stormwater.
I'm sorry?
This is schools and stormwater, you know, it's a lot of hospitals.
School impact fees are typically handled by the county?
Understand, but we do work with them too in terms of when we get the growth, the growth itself, it spawns that relationship, so, yeah.
Yes.
We have to have, I mean, we need to work with them like partners, so.
Yes, absolutely.
So great, that's a task that I'm quite sure Mr. Holmes is going to have you do, so that in three to six months, we'll have something to review. I just wanted your take on it, because you were.
Yeah, right, I'm the expert.
All right, I, you off the hook, you off the hook, but I thank you for your response.
Order and pay for it, also, so. Okay, is there anything else on impact fees and annexation at this point? All right, next up, Airport Advisory Board recommendation to allow private organizations to organize and stage the next fly-in, Mr. Hill and Carshow.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner, at the September Advisory Board meeting, a presentation was made by, uh, uh, local aviation enthusiast Charlie Douglas, Douglas Hall Firm here in town, in partnership with the helicopter, uh, business at, in Ormond Beach called Tomlinson Aviation. Um, at the end of the presentation, uh, they have requested to take over the planning staging of the next fly-in. The board was impressed, uh, with, uh, uh, the experience of Tomlinson Aviation, connections in the aviation world, and, uh, felt confident he could put it on safely. Uh, Mr. Tomlinson is the president of Tomlinson Aviation, and Mr. Douglas's passion to want to bring aviation, yeah, bring aviation to Palaca for the youth in the town. Charlie really enjoyed, has enjoyed the fly-in and, um, is just about to get his helicopter license, you know? He's a licensed pilot, and it just, and that's how he met Mr. Tomlinson. But, uh, the board's recommendation was to recommend the city commission approve this private organization and to take over the fly-in. After looking at the, what I put together in Nova's agenda, uh, Ms. Thompson, uh, Mr. Griffith, thought that, uh, doing so was a little bit exclusive, could be viewed as exclusive use or authorization, you know, to one particular business. So we took, uh, and, uh, but you want to?
Council, council, go ahead and, and, and kind of explain, um, the legalities.
Yes, Airport Advisory Board.
Can't hear you.
Sorry, sir, I know you like that. The Airport Advisory Board, um, voted that they did not want to sponsor the, um, the event this year. So we were recommending that it be considered as a special event and that they would apply for permission from the, the city to conduct the fly-in, the Douglas Tomlinson Group.
Right, and that we would vacate the calendar for that particular event, and they would apply just as any other organization would. The, um, I think the other thing, just as a recollection for the commission, if you recall, uh, the last couple of years, um, the, there was, there's been considerable conversation about how the event's grown. We actually talked about at one point, looking to see if we could find, um, an event planner to come in and help and assist with those processes. I think, you know, having this group being willing to bring on the special event into the community, it just creates another opportunity for us as far as, um, tourism is concerned. And so, um, eh, sometimes it always seems as though private organizations can do, um, things a lot differently than government does. I think the Airport Advisory Board has done a great job in getting the recognition for this event with a handful of people. And I think, uh, at the end of the day, uh, the board has grown a bit weary in helping, they're willing to assist in, in providing some of the contacts that we've had historically. But there's an organization that's willing to take the reins and, and make it a bi- a bigger and better event. So, any questions?
I'm all for it, I don't think it's any different than other sections stepping in and trying to light the blue crab.
Trying to make like the blue crab and those kind of, um, festivals happen, so I'm all for it.
And it will come back up, what commission, uh, be approved as a special event, we're going to have ourselves here. Thank you.
And so for the purposes of this item, uh, we'll, we need to entertain a motion on this, or just a motion to, for us to allow, uh, the date to be picked up by any organization.
Yes, sir.
So, as a part of it, so we'll, we're entertaining a motion at this point for us to vacate, um, the fly-in and allow for private organizations to take over.
So, one second.
It's most on the floor in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, project update, Mandy Tucker. I don't think we got a project update earlier.
Yes. Yes, so the project update was distributed along with the agenda and sent out to the commission, um, last week. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions on the projects that you received? Just, can we just blow it up a little bit for the public? Any particular projects that we want more information on, or you want to highlight? Seeing none, the amphitheater project seems to be one that everybody's talking about right now. Um, I, I guess as far as the groundbreaking, I know you guys are meeting every Monday, is it?
Yes, that is correct.
Any, on, uh, the, the, so somebody's not attended on Monday, so any, uh, physical brown grape, breaking? When is that, when are we looking at that's going to take place?
Um, we are anticipating that some of the electrical will break ground within the next seven to 10 days. The staking out of the location of the stage should take place within, again, the next seven to 10 days. There's a red shirt workday where there'll be some, um, site improvements. And I believe that's scheduled for October, I want to say that's the twelfth, but I would need to double check that, hold on just a second.
And that's subject to change based upon the other work items?
Right, yes. Mr. Chairman, I would also mention that, uh, Mr. McLean informed me yesterday that he had received a check for fifty thousand dollars from the Rotary Club of Palaca to be used for the amphitheater upgrade.
I'm happy to hear that, but I would like that meeting to be placed on my schedule as it was requested at our last meeting, when we discussed that, so I can be a part of that planning.
I'm sorry, I'll be certain that you're included, I apologize.
And so, um, nobody, nobody seems to get money like Wayne. Wayne knows how to, Wayne knows how to ask for, make Wayne the fun, the fundraiser to the merits, so, um, again, just kind of, if you can, just send out the, once you get the final timeline of how you start to push that project, I think everybody's going to be kind of interested, and it's going to be a good opportunity for publicity and partnership, so.
When did X of four to five dollars come out?
Hundred quarter. And then they, um, and then he just got another fifty. Yeah, they, Lowe's gave additional.
That was a Lowe's and.
It was a original, the original award was a hundred, I gave, and then they upped it. So it's now a hundred and seventy-five in the pile.
Still got a short time frame.
All right, um, thank you for the updates on the projects. Next up, Mr. Holmes.
Have nothing further at this time.
Uh, Mr. Griffith, anything else?
Nothing further, sir.
Ms. Jones?
Nothing, sir.
Seller survey is enough, huh? Ms. Walsh? Chief Taylor?
So, uh, as of the middle of September, our department has responded to twenty-eight hundred and forty-four calls, forty-eight of those being fires, uh, one hazmat incident, two thousand two hundred and fifty medical calls, uh, fifty-three hazardous conditions, a hundred and six citizens assist, um, two hundred and twelve good intent calls, and a hundred and twenty-seven fire alarms or false alarms, and then, uh, thirty special incidents.
What do you call good intent calls?
Sir?
What are good intent calls?
Intent when you, you're going to a call and you, for some reason, get canceled. So either they decide to go by private vehicle or something else. So it was a good intent. So it was a good intent, but we didn't make. Any questions on any of that?
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Chief Shaw.
I provided a copy of the statistical data for our neighbors for you guys. Each of you have a printout. I like to basically focus on our areas, areas of improvement in which we're doing for so far this year. The improvement from 2020 to 2021, an area of violent crime, as you can see, is down 16%. As we discussed previously in other meetings in reference to our UCR neighbor crime numbers, moving to neighbors next year, we are doing very well in the violent crime areas. We'll be down in negative 2% as a reflective neighbors. Moving to property crime, we are down in negative 34% and move correction in UCR area and moving in neighbors will be down negative 21%. Overall, we are down negative 17% for crime in the area of Palatka. Very proud of those numbers. We are working very hard to ensure that we continue to move forward, especially with the changes over to neighbors and how it would affect next year. So next year, UCR will be going away and we will be comparing neighbors to neighbors.
So the UCR change is 20, is 27%?
The UCR change is for overall crime, no, sir, is negative 17%. Where you see the 27% is total other crimes.
Right.
And that's where total other crimes, where it goes up is where we're beginning to include the some, the small crimes, the misdemeanor crimes, things that wouldn't have been included as of previous years. The crimes, for example, such as narcotics and things of that, that really aren't category. And UCR as part one crimes, they're usually caught up in part in others and part two.
So when you get the neighbors change at 33%, what is, how, how does that play into the whole thing?
So when we look at crimes, neighbors, UCR only takes that top crime. So for instance, if you have a felony and a misdemeanor, UCR only grabs that that number one, that top crime. Neighbors grabs them all. So when we look at neighbors, it is overall, so the 33% increase would be all the crimes included that are documented on that incident. So for the year, everything we've gone up, that would be a 33% would be gone up 33% compared to what we would have been calculating last year to what we'll be calculating next year's time.
But, but based on the UCR, you're sending the net reduction 17?
That's correct. So last year we did UCR and as you remember last year, we had to increase in crime. Comparing to what we have from last year to this year in the UCR area, we are at a negative 17%.
So when, so when the numbers hit those areas, and I guess this is the question, so looking at the neighbors, so you got a neighbor to 33, the neighbor's change is 33, are, is there anything that you do? Is there, do you, what adjustments do you make as you started there with those numbers changing and the flux? Even though you got a 17% reduction from the UCR side and neighbors are showing 33, from a programming standpoint or anything from a competency standpoint, what's your adjustment so that?
So as we begin to monitor the crimes, one will say, for example, for motor vehicle theft, property crimes, as you can see, for motivate, motor, motor vehicle theft, it's actually up 3%. We begin to look into each one of those crimes, document the areas at which they occur, how they happen, and if they have any suspects in common. We then begin to communicate with the county and see if they have something similar in surrounding areas and see if we can develop any patterns. And then we begin to provide procedures or different techniques to eliminate the.
Remember the the bowl program over in Gainesville?
Yes.
So are you implementing like any of those strategies? Are you seeing opportunities for those?
That is correct. We're implementing different strategies for different types of crimes where it may include investigative, where it may include proactive, where it may include strategic partnerships with entities such as our local businesses and stuff like that who are being impacted. So we're using several different techniques depending on what it is to be able to access and focus on those crimes.
Are you also incorporating like services, safe places for people who may have repeat crimes or different things of nature, it may not even have to be a repeat thing, but particular services that could help those individuals, I guess, deal with not having to be re-arrested or anything like that, like certain services.
Prevent, prevent, prevent.
Right, various.
So we do, we deal with repeat offenders in a couple of different manners. Some of you have the drug offender courses that we attend with as well with the county. But working well and tightly with the state attorney's office to identify and to focus on those individuals as far as the repeat offenders and then in preventive measures, beginning to find different ways to, once people begin to get out of prison, to help make sure they're working well with the reentry programs to make sure they're finding different jobs and things like that so that they won't fall into that same pattern to begin to reoffend. Hopefully, I'm answering your question, if that's what you're asking.
Well, I mean, you just said, get out of, I was just talking about like people who are not necessarily going to prison, but yes, safe answers, you got a person who go to Walmart, steal.
Okay, so, yes, sir. So there's, there's programs we have in place. You have the community service hours and different things like that. You have SWAT for the juveniles. We have different programs in place that that don't necessarily put them in the system, but allow them to work off said crime and keep them out of system and keep them in a positive manner. We also work them through PALS. PALS is a big component to getting them back in the community, working with the community and dealing with preventive measures with not only the juveniles, but the adults as well.
So I think, I think probably better examples, kind of, some of the stuff you do, say we get a kid who finds himself making poor decisions with drugs or whatever, and as opposed to having a state center in prison, you kind of help steer him as far as college or, or some type of career path, military, whatever.
That is correct. And with the PALS program, part of the mentorships and the things we do, follow them guidelines to ensure that we are able to reach out and make a connection with those individuals to get them back on a straight path and provide information such as college and career development.
Right, thank, and one last thing and just shut down, but the mental health piece in terms of dealing with people who have mental illness, when we go to calls and different things of that nature, do you, are you seeing an increase in those type calls or?
We, we have seen an increase and I think one of the things we've reached out to our legal aide and referenced to Ms. Val and reference to implementing of programs to allow us to address certain things, to not be able to continue to respond to calls of repeat violence or violence on oneself. And that's the RPO program. It's something that we're putting in place right now. We are working on the policies and make sure we have them outlined. We've got direction from Ms. Val and we are taking care of that, working on that now so we can return that back to her so she can review it and give us approval for implementation.
What's the RPO? Could you expand on that, chief?
You would have to ask that question.
What's the acronym?
Yeah, yeah.
Let's just give a quick summary.
It's basically individuals who attempt to do violent on others or themselves with use of a weapon or things of that nature where that they can't continue to do that or can't have access to that weapon, whether it be a firearm or anything like that, we can, that we can take.
Into a protective order.
Thank you. Risk protection order, but you had to ask that question when I lost that.
All right.
And I had just have a question. But the crime stats on homicides, last year, year to date, we had six. Twenty twenty-one, year to date, we had three. Of the nine, how many arrests have been made on those homicides?
Of the nine currently, we have two that have been arrested, one that has an active warrant, and we are in hopes, with our fingers crossed, hoping to through HIU to be taking a couple to the Supreme Court, I'm sorry, not Supreme Court, taking a couple to get indictments on here in, in the near future. A very near future. To grandeur, grandeur, thank you, sir. Possibly six, if you ask, I, I, I won't know directly until we reach those, the grandeur.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? And so, just so you know, I asked both of the chiefs to give some data for us as we move into the new fiscal year, but also so that citizens can get an idea of some of the programs that are available, some of the things that are happening in the community as a whole. And then as a commission, we're informed of what some of the trends are. So when people start to ask us questions, we can, you know, we can be, we can be advocates and we can also be conduits for information. And so that's one of the reasons that we wanted to push that through. So I definitely appreciate both of you guys getting that information in a pretty quick form.
And so. Mayor had a couple of other things I wanted to touch on. Just being, we are, we currently are on tire shift downs, the guys have been rotating well, working overtime. But I did want to touch on in the last two weeks, the, the job that they are doing. They've, they pulled, responded to 1,476 calls for service. And again, that's minus with the swing in for a total shift, pulled over 107 case numbers. And again, it's in a two-week span and basically made 31 arrests. Things that you would see on a regular basis, we're not seeing our numbers decrease and they're working very tirelessly and hard.
Keep making them.
Now, well, we, we, we want.
The object was not to make.
We want, we want to make sure, we want to make sure we don't have a lingering to for things that may not require the arrest. We don't need them up. Yes, sir.
Thank you, chief. Thank you. Anything for gas authority? Yes, sir, yes, sir. Hey, listen, we appreciate, hey, we appreciate you being here. Definitely. Anything for legal? We can't hear you. Okay, finance. Ms. Krantz.
Just one little passing note, we did receive a resignation from a member of the Stork Preservation Board this week.
Okay, Mr. You. I think that covers this. Commissioner McCaskill.
I just think, want to thank staff and finance for the hard work that they did with the budget this year.
Definitely, thank you. Commissioner Bor.
All right, just real quick, I just been appointed to the advocacy committee and we had our first meeting and got a little bit of information from, but I'll share it real quick. The information, the money that we were seeing for Arden, they have a website that you can go to and to see how people or other cities, municipalities spend their money, not only just in Florida, but across the United States. So I sent that link over to Don and and Lauren and as, and, and Sunny, so that they can share with everybody, share with everybody on the commission and the staff. So you can go in and just look at it and you can filter how you like, but it gives you ways that however they spend that money, you can see how they spent the money and it can kind of give us an idea. So that's all I had with that. Again, I want to thank the staff for the magnificent and wonderful job that they've done with everything from the budget to the salary survey and everything else. So with that being said, I turn the rest of my time over to the mayor. You want my time?
I'm gonna pass it, I'm gonna pass it to Commissioner Jones. Miss. Y'all hear that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, I just want to thank staff as well for your continued dedication to making sure that the requests of our commission are fulfilled to the best of your abilities. It does not go on and say it, not to only staff in-house, but to staff in general, those that are taking care of us daily, dumping trash, running sewer, all of those kind of things. Police, fire department, we are eternally grateful, especially in this time of just not being at full capacity with working and being flexible in so many ways. We are eternally grateful for you all. Thank you.
Now it's my turn.
You said you were done.
My turn because I didn't want camera to go after me. I truly want to thank the staff and I want to congratulate you guys for getting the, the money that you guys so you guys definitely deserve it and that we did not want to prolong this process any longer. There are some of this, the intricate parts that I, I didn't like, but I did like seeing you guys get what I feel you all deserve. I want to let you know that.
Only the rookie. So, so no, in all sincerity, we've had a spirited budget process and salary survey, but the reality is we, we laugh, we, we disagree very actively, but it affects lives, it affects families, it affects this community and the direction that we go in. And so I appreciate everybody from those who've sat in the chairs and given suggestions through public comment and the organizations and everyone else. I did. And I think also, just this commission and the amount of time that you put in, one of the things that I didn't talk about, that I didn't bring up this year, and it's something for consideration, and it's, it's hard for you guys to vote for a raise for yourself, but our commission means just as much as the county commission and the school board and everyone else, and you make half the money. And I, I wholeheartedly believe that we need to look at the way the structures are set up. We probably meet more than most governmental agencies in this county. And we need to look at the way that stuff is set up because it takes sacrifice, it takes time, it takes money to do it. And, you know, I, I truly believe that you guys deserve a raise for what you do, for the commitment that you have. And just to sit here for hours and listen to Commissioner Jones alone is enough for a raise. It's a joke. And so I.
I was thinking the same thing about you, man.
But no, no.
Kind of long-winded, man.
But no, but, but I'll just say, I, I think that this commission, you know, we look at it, we've taken care of our, we've taken care of our employees and I think it's time that, you know, we, we start to look at in the future, you know, what we do compared to, you know, other organizations in this county that make twice as much as you guys make sitting here on this diet. But I, I honestly, I'm, I'm, I'm excited about what the future holds, where we're going, the fact that we are having spirited debate about issues that pertain to the city and we're truly sitting here talking about what happens from a growth perspective. Looking at the projects, looking at where we are, looking at what the chiefs brought forward, it's just good for us. And so you know, we're, on October 5th, the commission gave us a mandate, they gave me direction to go and talk to the county, to talk to the school district. But on October 5th, we're going to present before the school district about Jenkins Middle School and make the request based upon what was put in place. And I'm asking all the commissioners to stand with me on that day as we make the presentation to this, to the school board. As we try to create a, a, a city campus and I think it's going to be a great opportunity for, for the city of Palatka, for the citizens as a whole. And I need you guys standing there with me because there's no greater influence than the five of us standing together along with our staff looking to move this community forward and be progressive. And so I think it's a great opportunity for us overall. And then on October 9th, there's another farm share over at Jenkins Middle School. They're looking to, I got a call from Ms. Emma, who actually is one of the farm share coordinators. They're looking to serve 500 families and they wanted to be sponsored by the city. And so that will, that will start at 8:30 that morning. The heavy lifting is going to start about seven and I'm hoping that the commissioners will be there as a whole to help out with that.
Six, six PM.
Sir.
They say this, I think it's at 6:00 PM, is that that time, Lee?
No, that's what the calendar says.
No, 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 it's 6:30 AM.
Okay.
So AM is when they're kicking off, unloading the semi truck. And then the event will kick off at 8:30.
Sweet, okay, that makes me feel a lot better because my, my, my lifelong friend from. Sweet. Okay, that makes me feel a lot better because my, my, my lifelong friend from fifth grade, he's, he's got his fiance and they, they, they're having a special occasion and it's on that same day and I really want to be able to participate. So I think I should, I'll be able to participate.
Yes, sir. So we'll, we'll be there. And, and so there's the opportunities for that. But so that's some of the stuff that we have in place. We've had, the owner of Green Dragon was in town this week who was really excited about Palakia. And, you know, you're talking 500 jobs with all the things that he's looking to do in Palakia. He was riding, looking at other properties to try to see where he can invest even further in the community. So he's just one of many that have come through this community and really committed resources and opportunity. Every day it seems like there's a different investors coming looking at Palakia and looking at ways that they can build this community up. So we're on track to move this community forward and we just have to make sure that we're conscious of what we do because it's going to affect the future of this community and lives. And so with that being said.